Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Alderman Dukniak is excused. Alderman Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Kuzikowski.
Here.
Could you all please rise for the pledge? Do we have any veterans with us tonight? Could you please lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance.
Could you just... No. And if you want.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, has everybody had a chance to go through their minutes? There's no questions or amendments? Uh, motion please.
Gale, move to approve minutes of October 30, 2017.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Staines.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Uh, our first public hearing is an official map amendment. And with us tonight, uh, is Doug Seymour, I believe. Or no, Catherine, you're gonna read the announcement.
Yep.
Going back to planning, sorry.
It's okay. Public hearing number one is to consider a proposal by Mike Carrick, The Orchard of McQuanago LLC and Mark and Kimber Halen to amend the official map for a portion of the southeast quarter of Section 21, mapped unimproved right-of-way, affecting the properties at 9349 South Nicholson Road, 1200 East Ryan Road, 9211R South Nicholson Road, and 9025 South Nicholson Road. There follows the proposed legal description. Date of the notice is September 13th, 2017.
Thank you Catherine. Uh, as Catherine said, it is a public hearing. We will make three calls. If you do wish to speak, please approach the podium. Uh, we need your name and address for the record, please. This is the first call. Second call. Third and final call. Okay, we will close the public hearing. On item four, move on to item five. Um, consideration of ordinance 2868 amending Section 6.01 of Municipal Code, an amendment to the official map for a portion of the northeast quarter and southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 21, mapped unimproved right-of-way affecting the properties at 9349 South Nicholson Road, 1200 East Ryan Road, 9211R South Nicholson Road, and 9025 South Nicholson Road. Uh, at this time, I'll open it up to the council for questions, comments. Uh, Alderman Toman.
Could we hear from Mr. Mayor? Could we hear from Community Development on, uh, an update?
Okay.
I read all the material from, uh, Planning Commission. I think there were quite a few issues that had to be dealt with, so.
Sure, I appreciate that and thank you. Before you this evening, first of several public hearings, is a request to amend the official map for these properties along Nicholson Road. And Alderman Toman, you're correct, there's quite an extensive discussion at the Plan Commission. First, let's talk about official maps for a second. And the existing official map is shown before you on the attachment or the exhibit on your screen. Uh, the city develops official maps and as part of their, their best estimate of the future roadways and taking into consideration the zoning, the environmental considerations, access considerations. And, uh, in many cases, those don't actually mesh with the actual development of those properties, which, and it's not uncommon that they don't. Uh, so when a subdivision plat is developed and presented, I mean, if the subdivision plat, um, only changes the boundaries of the, the roads of the official map, streets within the properties, typically we can do that by a subdivision plat. But there are some cases where, uh, the recording of a subdivision plat changes the, uh, or impacts properties outside of the actual, uh, property that's being subdivided, and that is the case here. There were two different properties that the change in the official map, in the officially mapped streets would have impacted the ability to develop those properties. And, uh, I, I don't know the, the, like, today's status of what's, uh, what's going on with that, but I can tell you that, uh, during the discussions with the Plan Commission and beyond that, that the developers, the applicant has been working with those two affected property owners to try to bring some resolution uh, towards those impacts that were being created by the change to the official map. And so before you, as your second element, this is the actual subdivision plat that's being proposed for that. And if you bear with me, and I know you won't be able to see me, see the pointer up on the, on the podium, but, uh, specifically as it affects the property to the north, there is a street stubbed out which would allow access uh, to that property for a future subdivision, which is consistent with the existing official map. The, where the one place where we do not have, uh, perfect alignment with the official map to date, and the applicants certainly can, uh, testify, uh, to the, the current status of that, and I would encourage them to do so, is in this area where we have an outlot that was previously served by this future officially mapped street and is not being served at this point in time.
Uh, sorry, can you clarify? We don't see the, the pointer.
Can you use your cursor, uh, your mouse on your...
Oh yeah, I can do that. Here, here's the outlot, if you guys can see that. Yes?
Yep.
And here's where the, the, uh, property to the north. So, the, the, this property, talking about the outlot property now, uh, that prop, it's an outlot right now, it does not have access right now. So this future officially mapped street would have provided access to that. And when a property is developed, as this one is, the, the subdivision parcel, uh, you take into account the, the presence of wetlands and you typically have a wetland delineation. And while there's not an official wetland delineation here, there's every indication from the mapping and the GIS resources that we utilize that there's a wetland on that property, which would certainly impact their ability to develop that property. I don't know, and maybe, uh, the applicants can speak to this as far as what the current status of that is, uh, but the Plan Commission certainly was cognizant of that when they, uh, reviewed this officially map, uh, change initially. And that's why you can see through the minutes, they, they did not forward you a recommendation for approval. So, I'd like to get an update on that, and, uh, I think that will answer a lot of our questions.
If I may, uh, Chair.
Please.
Um, so, two letters were submitted, a letter from each one of the, each one of those adjacent properties, the one to the north and then the one on the, um, east side of the property. I happen to be one of those owners. So, um, the letters were submitted to Common Council, Plan Commission, and to Mr. Tanner from Corn dorfer Homes. Um, both of, um, the letters are acceptable to the new preliminary plant here, plant here before you tonight. So, Council has these as well as, um, Plan Commission and, um, the applicant as well, so those are in hand.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you Doug. Questions, comments from the commission?
Mayor, I mean, I have one letter, I don't, you said, letters.
Uh, which one do you have?
Mine.
Yes. Thank you.
The second letter, I didn't directly receive. Um, I believe it went to the mayor. Um, and, uh, planner Kerry Pepalon had received it. Um, Dan had, uh, or the mayor had forwarded it. So if anybody needs a copy of that second letter, I have it.
Uh, they basically, the gist of the letter is they acknowledged the wetlands on the southwest side of their property.
That, in effect, would alleviate of these, certainly the initial concerns that staff had regarding the proposed changes to the map. And in fact, given the consent of those two adjacent property owners, it really, um, uh, establishes that the plan changes would be acceptable, given that, aside from those two impacts, the changes would occur entirely within the, the property being subdivided.
Any other questions, concerns? Uh, again, at planning, uh, we did go over this quite extensively. Uh, questions arose. They did, they did work with the applicant. You can see the plan has been revised to the satisfaction of the two property owners, uh, particularly access to the one and then the wetlands on the backside of the other, which were suspected, but really had to be investigated and proven, so. Would you like to say something?
Yes, Dave Tanner with Corn dorfer Homes, 175 North Corporate Drive, Brookfield. Um, here also, we're working in partnership with Mike Carrick of Carrick Homes. Uh, we're very pleased with the revised plan. We've, um, worked, worked hard on it. I appreciate the cooperation from both property owners. It was a little bit of a journey to work through all the, uh, design elements and, uh, official roadmaps and, and then the other properties mentioned, there were some wetlands. Um, so I think we have all the information now. We've, we've, um, submitted a plan. We're, we're happy to hopefully move forward today after getting this approval with the design and come back with a developer agreement very soon. And, uh, of course, we would really like to, um, get everything finalized so we can hopefully get started on the project sometime next spring and at least get that first phase developed and, and started. But first and foremost, we have to follow the process and, um, appreciate the, uh, time and attention of, of the common council.
Thank you very much.
Doug? Just real quick, I mean, as we move forward, a lot of these items coming before the council, I'd like to point out how that relates to the strategic plan that was recently adopted. And certainly under thoughtful and prosperous development, there was a section regarding, uh, encouraging appropriate single-family residential development. And this is an excellent step towards achieving that goal. Uh, it takes a, a, a portion of property or portions of properties that are very well suited to a single-family residential. And working through these processes, it's, uh, it's encouraging to see that the city will have, be able to add to its inventory of high-quality single-family lots in the near future.
Thank you Doug. Anything else from council? Uh, Alderman Toman.
Were you, uh, were you able to maintain the number of lots that you originally wanted? Or is, does this northern portion change anything?
This most recent change had reduced one lot. We were concerned about losing more than that, which would not have been feasible, but this, this is, this is fine. We're happy to work with the adjacent owners and the city and come up with a plan that I think is acceptable to everyone. So, I think it's a very good plan and, and, um, we're happy to hopefully be moving forward again. And, um, we're very excited about the project.
Alderman Gale?
Doug, just to clarify too, this is, uh, strictly an ordinance to approve a new street layout in this property, right?
That's correct.
We'll be back for a couple of other things, or it's, planning, we'll be dealing with a couple of things.
Actually, planning, it'll be back before planning for a preliminary plat approval. The council will not see this until a final plat, which means essentially it'll be in and, uh, ready to go, uh, before the council approves the final plat.
So we're just approving a new street layout?
That's exactly right.
Can I ask a, could I ask a quick question at some point?
Yes.
So, more of a question for Doug. So does it have to go back to the Plan Commission for reapproval of the plat? It's already been approved?
It's been approved, then no you don't.
Okay, 'cause I believe we're planning on coming back before the council very soon for the development agreement.
Yep.
Hopefully, as soon as November, maybe.
Great.
Yeah, we're excited.
Excellent. Okay. Uh, seeing no more questions, comments, um, motion?
Gale, move to approve ordinance 2868 amending Section 6.01 of the Municipal Code, an amendment to the official map for the portion of the northeast quarter and southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 21, mapped unimproved right-of-way affecting the properties at 9349 South Nicholson Road, 1200 East Ryan Road, 9211R South Nicholson Road, and 9025 South Nicholson Road.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, item six, uh, consideration of a rezon by John Thompson, Summerstone LLC, to rezone the properties at 7725, 7869 South 13th Street, from RS3 Single Family Residential and B3 Office and Professional to B4 Highway Business. Catherine?
Public hearing number two is to consider a request by John Thompson, Summerstone LLC, to rezone the properties at 7725 and 7869 South 13th Street, from RS3 Single Family Residential and B3 Office and Professional Business to B4 Highway Business. The applicant is John Thompson, Summerstone LLC, property owner is Rebecca R. Dimarb as receiver for Drexel Commercial Limited, Partnership and Suite Dimarb LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is September 13th, 2017.
Doug?
Thank you. Uh, this is a request to rezone the properties at 7725 and 7869 South 13th Street. From, there are two different designations. The, the 7725 is zoned RS3 Single Family Residential, 7869 is zoned B3 Office and Professional Business. I mean, the larger parcel was zoned to B3 in 2006. And recognizing that the, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, was changed for planned mixed-use for this area, uh, and the original intent for the B4 zoning district was to allow for highway commercial development or development that's consistent with, uh, properties which have, uh, highway visibility, this certainly does, um, fit within that category. Uh, just, uh, with, with respect to the ultimate development plans, it is likely that this is the first step in the process that will include a plan unit development designation, but this is just a first step in that process, changing the zoning to that base zoning of B4 Highway Business. And at that point, when the PUD, if that is brought forward, then they would be bringing forward, as part of the, the general development plan, you would see the actual plans for that property with respect to access, uh, buildings, layouts, things of that nature. But this change just changes the base zoning from B3 and RS3 to B4 Highway Business. This is a public hearing, and given that, I would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposal to rezone these properties on 13th Street, uh, to please fill out an appearance form when your name is called. Please proceed to the podium to address your question or comment. The common council, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you Doug. We'll make three calls. This is the first call. Second call. Third and final call. We'll now close the public hearing and move on to item seven, consideration of the ordinance, 2869 rezoning the properties at 7725 and 7869 South 13th, from RS3 Single Family Residential and B3 Office Professional to B4 Highway Business. I'll open it up. Alderman Kirkowski.
Mayor, uh, just a correction on the agenda. This is a first district item. And, um, I did receive an email from Linda Oshleger. She asked that I read the email into the record because she's not able to attend the meeting. So, it's not very long. Says, "I'm emailing you because we will not be able to attend the October 17th meeting of the common council. You and I have spoken on the phone a couple of times, so I know you are aware of our feelings regarding B4 zoning along this section of South 13th Street. I understand that this land is going to be developed commercially, no matter what, but B3 would be at least more in keeping with the neighborhood. My husband and I attended both zoning board meetings and expressed our views and our reasons for them with no noticeable effect. I would like to think the common council will not just rubber stamp the zoning board's recommendation without due consideration of how it will affect the neighborhood, which has been in existence for over 50 years, but my hopes are not high. It truly seems that whoever has the deepest pockets wins out in these situations, even if they have no history in Oak Creek. At the last meeting, the representatives for Summerstone LLC stated that they had several businesses' interest in buying, and she puts leasing, question mark, spots in the proposed project, but when he asked the name, but, but when he was asked the names of these businesses, he declined to answer. That certainly doesn't seem forthcoming or indicate a willingness to consider the impact of his plans on the established neighborhood. Why does everything have to be such a big secret when we in the neighborhood will be the ones most adversely affected by this project? I trust that the above statements will be read into the record at the October 17th Oak Creek Common Council meeting. Thank you Linda and Dan Oshleger, 7764 South 13th Street, Oak Creek."
Thank you, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Greg, anything?
Um, although at first district, I do get quite a few calls on that corner. Um, people asking or hearing rumors about what might go in there. Um, so just for clarification, can you kind of go over what type of businesses can go into a B4?
Sure, I mean, and, and first, certainly everybody wants to know and have as much information as possible about what's happening in their neighborhood and the properties adjacent to theirs. And, uh, I will say, for a number of reasons, and, and some of them for competitive reasons, uh, many developers, many landowners, uh, are not at liberty to discuss specific tenants of properties until they have signed purchase and sale agreements, and sometimes not even until after that. So, the, the, the response from the applicants with respect to specific users of that property is not uncommon. There's nothing nefarious with respect their, their inability to mention detailed clients. But having said that, I mean, the, the B4 Highway Business District does allow for a great range of commercial users in there. And for example, I think that, uh, uh, much of the, the, the commercial properties along Howell Avenue, whether it be the Coles, the Targets of the World, uh, have that B4 zoning attached to them. Not so much, uh, along Drexel Avenue, because that's, that's the Drexel Town Square designation. But, I mean, the B4 district does allow for a number of uses. Uh, probably the most, uh, uh, it's really cumulative based on it allows, anything in the B1 and the B2 districts is also allowed in the B4. So, uh, I think you can see, just given some of the types of uses along Howell Avenue, that there's a potential for something like that. Having said that, remember, I also, uh, alluded to a PUD zoning that would be, uh, forthcoming after this and with the assemblage of additional parcels in that area. Uh, and with that, you will have a much better idea of the layout and something, to some extent, some, some of the users attached to that. But that is not before this evening. The proposal is, again, kind of an interim step to get that base zoning to B4, which would allow them to work further on the acquisition, acquisition of some of those properties and the formulation of a, of a PUD there. This certainly is a, an intersection, an area, uh, of the city that we hold a great respect for in terms of its visibility and its, its, kind of the gateway image it presents towards the, the rest of, uh, Milwaukee County, southeast Wisconsin, given the interchange and things that are happening surrounding that. So, with that being said, I think it's safe to say that, that staff, Plan Commission, uh, will really take a very good look, close look at the site plans, the proposed uses for that, and the quality of those proposed users, uh, to make sure that we maximize the value of that. Certainly, you don't get a whole lot of opportunities, and Andrew will, uh, we've talked about this quite a bit, to develop lands surrounding a new freeway interchange. And you won't get a second chance. So, with that in mind, we are committed towards, uh, looking at the highest and best uses for those properties. And at this point, we're just not there yet, but, uh, this is a step in that process.
Alderman Gale?
Uh, yeah, thanks Mayor, and, and thank you Doug. I think that, that laid the groundwork, I think, fairly, fairly well. I appreciate your commentary that, um, you know, with the significant investment the city obviously made in the, in the interchange and the extending Drexel Avenue to the west, it was a, a large commitment, um, that we, uh, proactively, proactively made to, to, uh, set the tax base and set the, set the future for the city in terms of a, a remarkably lucrative, uh, development opportunity. So, that, uh, that land is not reproducible. Uh, obviously, we need to hold it near and dear and, and work with the developers best we can to seek the highest and best use. And I appreciate staff's efforts to make sure that happens, and I'm sure Andrew and Doug and Bridget and Mike will see that that happens and that it give us a product that the entire community can be happy with.
Chris?
I would just say in the confidentiality department, you know, there is, you have to, you have to take in mind that when you're working with somebody or a potential, um, citizen or future partner with the city, no matter what, whether it's here or anywhere in the city, confidentiality is, you know, that's respect. They, they have to have the confidence in us that we are going to, in good faith, work with them. And likewise, so we need to make sure that we're sharing that with the citizens so they know that, we know that we're, what we're doing and we're taking it at face value, that we want to make sure we get them what we need as a city at that corner.
Anything? No? Okay. Mayor, just one more final comment. Well, I could, I'll let, oh, okay. Name and address, sir? Whoa, on, on the mic, please.
Dennis C. Slack, 7781 South 13th Street. My backyard goes right up against that property. I says, "I'm for the B4." I do have a question though. Can you tell me what IKEA is? Is that a B3 or B4 zoning?
That is, I'm gonna let, um, our city planner explain it, because...
Definitely, that is actually a different zoning category. It's B6 is an interchange, regional retail designation.
So, you know, somebody, everybody tries to figure out what a B4 zoning looks like. I was hoping there would be some sample properties that you could tell people what B4 actually looks like.
It does, it is complicated, and I think Doug probably gave the best examples with the Targets of the World and the Coles and the area we've experienced down there.
Item two, and you might not know this, but, uh, 13th Street's gonna be widened.
We are hoping, yes.
Oh, you're hoping, okay. 'Cause I was wondering if there's gonna be parking on 13th Street or do I have to talk to the county about that?
That is actually the county. I don't know if we have any insight. Uh, Mike does.
I could speak to that.
I don't want to get off the track there.
Oh, good, good question, sir.
Yes, I could speak to, to some extent. The, the road is being, um, it, it's very close to, uh, design completion. Again, this has been designed by Milwaukee County. They have significant grant funding, uh, for the project. Their funding is tied to, or their design is tied to the funding. Uh, they are not widening it to four lanes at this time. They are doing some improvements. There's, they are going to completely reconstruct it, but they are not doing widening. They are going with the same number of lanes that are out there now. They will be putting in sidewalks on both sides. They will be putting, uh, on-street bike lanes. Uh, they'll be, uh, doing intersection improvements at, at Drexel and 13th. But it, um, falls a little bit short of what we were hoping to see out there. But at any rate, there will be no parking as part of this, uh, design.
Because for the simple reason they did buy property from me, so the right-of-way did expand though, except the sidewalk and the bike lanes.
Yes, and drainage.
There'll be no parking in front of the house, and then my driveway's gonna be shortened, so there's not gonna be that much parking in my driveway, so my parties have to be reduced, so. I just was wanting to know that, you know, if the, the parking was gonna be eliminated, and you said it will be eliminated on the road.
There will be no parking, correct.
Thank you.
Excellent. Mayor, I just want to add that of the number of phone calls I get from residents on 13th Street, uh, I consistently tell them that the, uh, whatever's gonna be put in there is going to be, uh, it's gonna be, have, have to be exceptional to the, to the city of Oak Creek, based on, hopefully, what IKEA brings to the, to the neighborhood. So, uh, I was, it was nice to hear what Doug said about, uh, about what they, the hopes and plans are. It was like, I, I agree, you only get one shot at, uh, something like this, so, thank you. I agree, you only get one shot at something like this, so, thank you. I agree, and at the chances sounding redundant with Alderman Kerkowski, Council President Gail, and our city planner, we did go to great lengths to develop Drexel Avenue interchange. That property is extremely precious to the city. We only get one shot at it. We want to get it right. It's gonna be the highest quality, biggest bang for the buck we can get, but we're not gonna settle when it comes to that property. If they come to us that there's something we don't like or doesn't fit, the message is gonna be clear from the council on down through staff of what we're trying to achieve here. In a sense, it sounds a little arrogant, but I think we've earned the right to be a little choosy there. You've seen all the development in Oak Creek, and I think we've earned that right, and we have a plan, and we're gonna try to stick to it as best we can, and also protect residents at the same time. Andrew, anything to add? So, if there's no other comments, questions? Motion?
Kerkowski, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2869, rezoning the properties at 7725 and 7869 South 13th Street from RS3 Single Family Residential and B3 Office and Professional to B4 Highway Business.
Clark seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Next up, we have a consideration of a conditional use by Nick and Ashley Timber, City 13, for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow indoor commercial recreation facilities, an escape room, in the existing multi-tenant building at the property at 6925 South 6th Street.
Catherine?
Public hearing number three is to consider a request submitted by Nick and Ashley Timber, City 13, for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow an indoor commercial recreation facility, escape room, in the existing multi-tenant building on the property at 6925 South 6th Street. The applicant is Nick and Ashley Timber, City 13, property owner, URSA Oak Creek LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is September 13th, 2017.
Thank you. Good evening. Nick, Ashley Timber, doing business at City 13, are requesting conditional use approval for an indoor commercial recreation facility within the existing building at 6925 South 16th Street, I'm sorry, 6th Street. So, just for everyone's information, indoor commercial recreation facilities are considered conditional uses in M1 Manufacturing Zoning Districts. We've seen trampoline places, seen indoor batting cages, things of that nature. Those are the types of things that are considered as one of those indoor recreation, commercial recreation uses. So, City 13 is an escape room business, and I must confess, I'm not familiar with escape room businesses, but the narrative attached to that says it would operate up to four city-themed rooms and a party area with a roughly 5,700 square foot suite. The concept is between 28 people in a room worked cooperatively with sets of clues to solve puzzles in a set amount of time, which is usually an hour, that lead to the exit. So, unlike fun houses or haunted houses, these rooms are fully lit, the goal being to escape rather than to be startled by props or actors. Now, if I'm, I'm sure the operator will shed some more light on that. So, essentially, this indoor commercial recreation facility was presented to the Plan Commission as an amendment to the conditional use permit for this multi-tenant building on South 6th Street. I think it was originally developed by Deb Teglia and Black Diamond since it's been sold to Ursa Logistics. A nice-looking building, and it's compartmentalized into suites. This would take one of those suites. So, the Plan Commission did review the proposed amendment. They actually have recommended their approval of that, subject to a set of conditions and restrictions that are included as part of your staff report. So, with that in mind, this is a public hearing. If there's any questions and/or comments regarding the proposed indoor commercial recreation facility at 6925 South 6th Street, if you please fill out an appearance form when your name is called, please approach the podium and proceed to address your comment or question to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. This will be the first call. Second call? We'll need your name and address, sir?
Hi, I'm Scott Vanenhutten with Ursa Logistics, 6925 South 6th Street, Suite 100. I just had one question with regards to the, one of the changes in 10B. It says permitted uses outdoor storage of vehicles and equipment used in the operation of the business, and was added Ursa-only. I'm just wondering if you could fill me in on that a little bit, please?
Yeah, essentially, so, Ursa certainly has the conditional use for the storage of their equipment outside. There, we would not, this conditional experiment would not allow for your tenant, in this case, City 13, that same ability to store equipment outside.
Okay, but is that then limiting us going forward with the use of our property with the other tenants or anything?
To the extent that you're recruiting new tenants who also want that outside storage, we would have to take a look at that to see if that's allowable. My guess is that any additional outside storage would be a change to your, essentially, the plan that you presented when you had your outdoor storage approved via conditional use, and we would probably propose taking that to a public hearing for an amendment to the conditional use permit. I just wanted to make sure that what you have for your business was approved, and attached with that was approved of the site plan, showing that outdoor storage. I do not believe, and we can certainly research that for and get back to you, that that allows you to lease to additional tenants who can just store things outside, store their equipment and merchandise when they have you outside, but we can certainly confirm that. And this, the passage of this clause does not necessarily allow for them to do that anyway. I mean, this really talks about the tenant that you have planned in that unit would not, and I don't know what equipment they might have.
Okay.
And we don't want to see, you know, props or anything like that sitting outside in the storage yard, because that really was not the intent of the conditional use that was issued for your business.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Welcome. Second, third and final call. Seeing no others, we'll close the public hearing and move on to consideration of ordinance number 2871, amending the conditions and restrictions in ordinance number 2777 to allow for an indoor commercial recreation facility at 6925 South 6th Street. Open it up to the council for questions, comments?
Sure.
Alderman Gail?
Doug, or the owners or the prospective tenants, is the provision in the agreement detrimental to you, or is that only for the owners? Is that something new?
Timber, 9415 South Kenny Lane, Oak Creek. What was the question again?
The provision that was inserted into this...
So, would you, recognizing that your use only applies to the indoor space, you wouldn't be allowed to store anything outside?
Correct.
Is there a problem for you?
No, I don't have any problem without storing anything outside.
That's easy.
Anyone else?
I was gonna say, I thought that we did discuss some of that at Plan Commission as well.
I think we did. It's more of a recreational, the people come in, they go into a room, they solve the puzzle, they get out of the room. There might be a little venue where they can hang out, have a refreshment, and maybe move on.
Correct. That is it. Yeah, we have no plans to store anything outside or anything like that, so.
Right. Again, exciting venue, another amenity that Oak Creek didn't have that's coming down here. A lot of buzz, a lot of people are excited about it, so we wish you well.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yes. Motion?
Kerkowski, make a motion that the council adopt ordinance 2871, an ordinance to amend the conditions and restrictions in ordinance number 2777 to allow an indoor commercial recreation facility at 6925 South 6th Street.
Clark second. Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Item number 10 is consideration of a request by the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility for a conditional use permit for the water treatment facility, water storage, and high-service distribution pump facilities on the properties located at 9175, 9235, 9325 South 5th Avenue, and 3953, and 3975 East American Avenue.
Catherine?
Public hearing number four is to consider a request submitted by the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility for a conditional use permit for water treatment facility, water storage, and high-service distribution pump facilities on the properties located at 9175, 9235, 9325 South 5th Avenue, and 3953, and 3975 East American Avenue. Applicant is Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility. Property owner is City of Oak Creek. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is September 20th, 2017.
Thank you. The council may recall that a similar conditional use permit was reviewed and approved back in 2015, and amended in 2016 for this very same use. And as part of the project, there were some delays with respect to the approval of the project from other sources, the state, PSC, what have you. And given those delays, the time limit in the conditional use permit expired, thus requiring the resubmit of the conditional use permit, as well as the CSM, which was previously approved by the Plan Commission and Common Council. Do you have a narrative describing the project? I'm not sure if Ron's here this evening or not, describe it, but nothing has changed. It's using, is exactly what the preamble said for storage tank and pump facilities for that property, and they have acquired additional property for that purpose. Given that the, nothing has changed, the Plan Commission certainly felt that the issuance of the CUP was, again, appropriate, and they have recommended to you that the conditional use permit be approved. Now, this is a public hearing. Anyone with any questions, comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit for the water treatment facility, water storage, and high-service distribution pump facility on the properties in 9175, 9235, 9325 South 5th Avenue, and 3953, and 3975 East American Avenue? Please fill out an appearance form when your name is called. Proceed to the podium and to address your comments and your questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. We will make three calls. This is the first call. Second call. Third and final call. We will now close the public hearing and move on to consideration of ordinance 2870, approving the conditional use permit for the water treatment facility, water storage, and high-service distribution pump facilities on the properties at 9175, 9235, 9325 South 5th, and 3953, and 3975 East American Avenue. Open it up to the council for comments, questions? Alderman Gail?
Thanks, Mayor. Just an update for the rest of the council that probably aren't fully aware of how this is transpiring. I'm a member of the Water Utility Commission, I've been for, I think, my ninth year there, but this has been, obviously, an ongoing saga since probably, I think, planning on this beginning of 2014, potentially. It is a large project mandated by the DNR because of the current disinfection treatment is an underground storage tank that has our disinfection treatment. The new project is a significant departure of that. It's above ground in a contact, the treatment tank that's above ground. It also includes a secondary disinfection through UV ray, which obviously, those folks who, remember, Cryptosporidium, would obviously be thankful to have a secondary disinfection method on the water supply, where the, one of, probably the last western shore water utility on the Great, on Lake Michigan that has, does not have a, currently unapproved and implemented backup secondary disinfection project. So, this is one that's been near and dear to the heart of the staff at the water utility. Obviously, replaces a lot of actually aged and dated equipment that's no longer being supported by its manufacturer, so it meets a lot of needs, serves a lot of upgrades and distribution needs, and will meet the needs of the community moving forward for this foreseeable future. Unfortunately, it has also corresponded with the water utilities agreement to potentially serve Waukesha with their Great Lakes Compact approval to draw water out of Lake Michigan to serve their needs. And the PSC has unfortunately tied those two situations together, and has made an approval of this particular project somewhat subject to the, some finality to the Waukesha water supply situation, which they are entertaining a potential offer from Milwaukee this kind of time. So, that is a little bit up in the air, and it will not be probably determined in the near term. December is the nearest opportunity for the PSC to make a decision here, and will likely be pushed off from there, so this is a, this is a situation that will continue to, unfortunately, troll along here at a slow pace. Franklin has taken the opportunity to challenge this project at every opportunity, so that hasn't obviously helped the situation any, but we believe it's in the best interest of the city of Oak Creek and for the quality of water supply, and we're doing everything we can as a utility to push this thing forward for our citizens.
Thank you for the information. Much appreciated. Does anybody else have questions or comments? Seeing none? Motion?
Gail, move to approve ordinance 2870, approving a conditional use permit for water treatment facility, water storage, and high-service distribution pump facilities on the properties at 9175, 9235, 9325 South 5th Avenue, and 3953, and 3975 East American Avenue.
Chris Kerkowski? Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, item number 12 is consideration of a motion to authorize staff to take preliminary steps to create a tax increment financing district for the properties at 610 West Rossin Avenue, as well as 7001 and 7045 South 6th Street.
If I may, just a word about the next two items on our agenda. There are separate authorizations for the council, obviously authorizing the staff, to take the necessary steps to bring forward three different TIF districts, or in one case, a possible amendment to an existing TIF district. What this is, is just that. It's bringing this to attention of the common council to give you an idea of what's potentially being approved, and it allows us to do the real homework and the more intense financial scrutiny and project plan scrutiny that will be necessary before we can present this to the Plan Commission at a public hearing, present it to the common council for approval, and ultimately, present it to the joint review board. So, this is not approving a TIF. This is laying the groundwork to getting the information that those three bodies that I just mentioned will need to properly review the application for a TIF. So, what you'll hear this evening is just a general overview of what the project is, and recognizing that the details, and certainly, the business deal with respect to the city and safeguarding its financial interests, will be thoroughly reviewed and worked out as part of the individual project plans for each of these, should the council authorize staff to proceed with that. So, the first one before you this evening, item 12, is from HSA Acquisitions, Inc. It's for the property roughly on 6th and Rossin Avenue. And this is, you know, you may know it as a bioverbal site. It's across the street from the fire department. It is a brownfield. And as this council has discussed on previous occasions, there are mechanisms available for private property owners and for communities in Wisconsin to redevelop brownfields, and really, one of the main tools in that toolkit is a tax incremental financing district. And as part of that, it's really, and I think Andrew's used the term poster child, and I think that it really speaks to the reason for the creation of TIF law in the first place, is to take these properties, which on their own, and by the market, will not be redeveloped and brought back into productive use, given the challenges that are associated potentially with environmental concerns, with concerns over blight, what have you. And by creating a TIF district, it allows communities, in partnership with private developers, to mitigate some of that risk by allowing the use of that future tax increment to pay off those project costs. So, all in all, in concept, a very good use of the TIF law, and something certainly that is of interest to the community. Andrew, did you want to add anything to that, or?
No, this would be a consistent next step with the fact that the council has reviewed terms for this. This one, we are ahead, a little bit ahead on the 6th and Rossin piece development versus the other two, but it is consistent. We should finalize those details tomorrow on those term sheet, on that term sheet, and then move, if the council wishes to this evening, move forward to that TIF creation element, our next step. So, I think, I think the applicant does have, you know, just a...
Brian?
Small presentation. I won't call it a presentation, Brian, that's probably too much, lending too much to it, but.
It really is, calling too much, but nonetheless, I'm happy to speak to the issue this evening. I'm Brian Randall, attorney with Freebert, Fenderdy, and St. John, and I'm here on behalf of HSA Commercial, a longtime client of mine, and I think in the packet, and I just saw on the screen, there were two brief slides that we have. HSA has been looking at this site for quite some time, and frankly, it was a wild goose chase to track down the owner and try to put it under contract, which we are under contract with an option to purchase the site. And that then led into, and you may remember, earlier this year, we had a couple of items on the council agenda for a Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation grant application request. As Doug briefly spoke, this is a Brownsfield site, and we're trying to put together the best package with state funds to investigate the environmental condition, as well as then ultimately leverage the TIF financing opportunity to clean up the site and then redevelop it. So, on the screen and in your packet was the very first, and I see on all caps, "Concept Only," site plan, which would be for a 180,000 square foot approximately industrial facility, consistent with the zoning in that area, for warehousing, for other tenants that could come into that and really take advantage of the proximity of access to the roadways. And the next slide will also show a very similar building that HSA built in Waukesha across from the airport and near the Expo Center. It was about 200,000 square feet, built in 2015, took down an old bowling alley, and it's, I believe, now fully leased up. So, it's a very similar type of product where it's gonna take a challenged site, redevelop it with a brand-new taxable use, and then... it with a brand new taxable use and then fill it with the tenants going forward. We'd be very pleased to keep working with the staff on this, it's been a long road with that, City Attorney Development Department's been working hard on it, but we are excited to take these next steps and really rise to the challenge. It's a dirty site, but we're going to be able to clean it up and move forward. So with the city's support in this public-private partnership, we look forward to working together and moving forward.
Just another word or two, I would say, this is a rather simple tax increment district. If we are moving forward this evening in that it's one site, approximately 10 plus or minus 10 acres, and we should be able to craft the TID project plan such that we would not need the full life, whether that be a 20-year life or 27-year life, I suppose we could avail ourselves to, given the brownfield nature. We certainly will not need that so we can, we can get in, clean up a very, you know, very unproductive property to say the least and get that property out of the tax increment district and back on the tax rolls for the general property tax relief as soon as possible. So it's kind of an in and out one, not as complicated as some of our other developments in the city have been.
Anybody else like to comment, question? Steve?
Mayor, I just want to, I made this comment before, I just wanted to make sure that we investigate the possibility of having a public safety portion of this TIF, like we have the administrative costs, only because TIFs do to some extent draw on public services and although I'm not asking that to be totally cover whatever the case might be, but I think there should be some investigation as to whether or not a public service portion of this, of this TIF agreement could be incorporated so that, help offset costs that the public safety has to incur in case something happens.
So to the extent that that's allowable under state statute, we will certainly investigate that?
So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have comment, question? Alderman, go.
Thanks, Mayor. Just on behalf of the staff here, Andrew and Melissa and Doug and the rest of the staff have done really yeoman's work with Brian and the potential developer here to really take a, an ugly piece of property in the city and really use the true meaning of the tax increment financing tool to kind of, you know, get a brownfield back on the tax rolls with a, with a nice quality development. Obviously, we just, we just talked to the owner of the property that will be adjacent, it's, they have a decent looking building and this obviously will add to the neighborhood, so to speak, it's across the street from the firehouse, so Brian, we wish you guys well, I think you guys are close to having a deal that's, that's copacetic and meaningful for the city and for your developer and we look forward to working with you.
Who else?
No, I have to agree, it's, it's, nobody can deny that the property's been neglected for a number of years. It's a perfect candidate for cleanup, everybody's kind of said that. This is kind of a straightforward deal. We've been through a lot of TIFs in my time here, this one actually is probably the most straightforward one I've seen in a long time with no curves or fancy nuances, so all I have to say on that, so again, I think we're moving in the right direction in another area of the city that greatly needs it. With that, motion.
Kerkowski, make a motion that the council authorize staff to take preliminary steps to create a tax increment financing district for the properties at 610 West Rossin Avenue as well as 7001 and 7045 South Sixth Street.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Item 13 is consideration of a motion to authorize staff to take preliminary steps to create a tax increment financing district for the properties at 330, 400, 410 and 500 West Drexel Avenue.
Doug?
Thank you. So this district, the second of the three that we're discussing this evening encompasses about a little less than six acres at the northeast corner of Sixth and Drexel, immediately to the north of Drexel Town Square. You'll see it encompasses the existing self-storage business, the former metal spun property, as well as the two Roth properties and buildings associated with that. So it's really not clear at this point in time whether this would be a new district or an amendment of the existing district that contains Drexel Town Square or TID 11. Both options will be investigated to see which is the most favorable in terms of the options for the city. The base value of that district is about $1.8 million, there are certainly facilities that are existing on those properties. Again, mix of businesses currently, certainly not the types certainly of, of development that we feel is consistent with the investment that the city's made in Drexel Town Square and we'd like to leverage that investment that we've made to create value on the adjacent properties. We've already seen that with the Starbucks, we've seen that with some of the new buildings, the Wheaton facility, I'm sorry, the Ascension Clinic on the east side, the veterinary clinic, some of the things that are happening adjacent to Drexel Town Square, and I think this is a natural offshoot of those, those types of investments that have already been made. The proposed concept plan, and maybe I should just let Brian talk about that, because he can probably talk a little bit better, but when, at the conclusion of that, I want to talk a little bit about some of the rationale and how this kind of differs from some of the more other types of TIF requests that we have and how that, that might be of benefit to the city should the council allow the staff to pursue and research that. So with us today, we have Brian Adamson from ICAP Development. Brian is, on behalf of ICAP, is proposing this district and has a few slides he wants to share with you and we'll just talk about a little bit of what his proposal is for the site.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, council. Brian Adamson, 833 East Michigan Suite 540, Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Very excited to finally be in front of you, I've been working with staff for several months on these properties and very excited to just be in front of you for the first time on a very, very preliminary basis to at least start the conversation about a TID amendment here on these properties and also a potential redevelopment of several of them. As Doug mentioned, these, these sites are immediately adjacent to TID 11, which is Drexel Town Square to the south. It encompasses four, four properties along Sixth Street and Drexel Avenue. Tax keys include 500, 440, 400 and 330. We're currently here on behalf of the, of the, of the western two parcels, the storage unit and the metal spun building and in connection with Roth Heating and Cooling, the owners of those two properties, as a potential to bring all of those into the TID at one time. Our current proposal is, is to redevelop it, the farthest two west properties into a, into a retail facility included in this TIF proposal. All of the assumptions here are based on solely those two properties and the redevelopment of those. So when you look at the values that we're talking about, currently we're viewing that as currently the only increment that we're looking for when we're, when we're here to base the TIF off of. This property is clearly, as you can see here, under the GIS website, you can see several of the issues that we have on this site, including the creek to the north, the wetlands along that, the floodway that we do have that encroaches on this property, both the Hundred Year and the flood plain. When, when we're looking at redeveloping this, we have done a wetland delineation on all four of these sites. We are, we are aware of where those boundaries are for both the floodway, the flood plain and the wetlands. We do intend to affect slightly some of the flood plain in the area, but do, do intend to avoid all impacts to the wetlands. We will not be moving any wetlands in any of the proposals. The next plan does show the, the current proposal for our development, that is a redevelopment of the storage unit and a redevelopment of the formal metal spun building. Included in that is about a 22,000 square foot anchor tenant and a small freestanding outlet on Sixth. Working with the city itself, we've, we've done several different traffic analysis here on the site, along with some parking analysis, just to figure out exactly what we need there. Several of the challenges with this site, just given what its current condition is, one, clearly the environmental, both from a physical aspect and from a contamination aspect, several of those I mentioned, the wetlands, et cetera. From a contamination standpoint, we have 14 probes and six monitoring wells currently on the site. All of them have identified several plumes on the site with VOCs and PAHs. We do, we do believe that we've identified where the plumes are and that they are no longer migrating towards the stream, however, we do need DNR concurrence for all of that. With our development plan, we will have a full remediation of all of these sites in addition to the asbestos cleanup on both the sites, the storage units and two of the additions that were done to the metal spun building, both have about eight to nine different asbestos components to it that we do have to remediate. We've completed all of those studies as well. One of the other things that makes these, these sites very challenging to redevelop is that we are actually buying existing businesses. The storage facility is obviously operating and Metal Spun is currently still operating this facility as well. They will continue to operate in here until the property is sold, mainly because there are several large pieces of equipment that cannot be moved without the proceeds from the sale of the property in order to afford to move them. So that creates a little bit more of a challenge when we're, we're acquiring these, these properties, to be able to not only buy the real estate but have to buy part of the business as well to get those to move. Timing on this project is, is we hope to continue after, again, this very preliminary presentation here, we hope to continue to work with staff on redefining our plan to plan for future development in the area as well. And then also, we'd like to get, obviously in front of the Plan Commission with a hope to begin construction sometime in the spring.
I think that's a really critical point to Brian's comments. If you layer in the, to be honest, elevated purchase price for the properties, notwithstanding the fact that you also then have to raise the buildings on the property and you layer that in with the environmental piece, that's where you really justify the need and but for the tax increment financing district, you know, nobody would be able to step in and do that with, with those extraordinary costs that come with that. So really those elements are the, will form the basis of the, of the TIF request and again, very, very appropriate use of the TIF law in that regard. I'd also note that one of the questions that will come up eventually here at the Plan Commission or the council, again, the, the work and the discussions that have been going on too, as staff had indicated early on in the process, we really want to have a full development of all of these parcels. I believe you have a very good working relationship with the two easternmost property owners or one property owner and that, you know, can, we can continue those discussions and we're hopeful that that can come to fruition. And as you'll, you'll see in some of the preliminary site planning, that's, that's in your, in your, on your monitor there, we are accommodating the future development of that with ingress egress, driveway, parking, you know, that kind of preliminary planning that's going into this, where we're not treating these as separate developments, we are positioning for, you know, the future as one cohesive development in this area, so.
Yeah, that's correct. And actually, one of these owners is here tonight as well and we are planning in a way that, you know, you know, we want to see this come into the TID in one, in one swoop for a couple of reasons. One, we treat this as four parcels that should act as one. Whether that gets done in phases, which it probably will, we think it's important to plan for that today. We have an oversized stormwater pond for that reason. We, we are planning for a termination of a drive out that at some point, whether, whether Roth remains there, redevelops on their site or, or ultimately relocates to somewhere else, we have that ability where whatever those situation is, as it stands today or in the future, we are able to connect these, these parcels. We have those conversations. We don't intend it to be part of our plan from the beginning, but we plan to look at this as a, as a, as a full plan that we can at some point in the future implement if, if that is desired by all parties.
Yeah, I swallowed, sorry.
Okay. As long as the applicants up, we'll take the questions. We do have one citizen that wants to make a comment, so. Mark, would you like to come up?
Mark Verhellen, 1200 East Ryan Road. My comment isn't particular to the TIF request number 13, it's a general comment for the city's policy on TIFs in general. And I think myself, I'm starting to think we're, we're getting to a point where we're maybe getting too many TIFs in the city. And I think everybody up here knows that, the council knows that, that in recent years the city's taken on substantial amounts of debt, offered a lot of incentives to a number of developers, grant money and everything else. And I think when any particular party comes and asks for TIF money, we look at the thing as a standalone entity. We don't look at it as, as how it adds or detracts from the big picture. And I think we're getting to a point where it would maybe be time to do an overview of all the debt with the TIFs we have, when they're due to be retired. Market, market factors that probably could deter from projected development, economic downturns as well, because like I said, anything that comes here, it's on a standalone thing and, you know, a lot of times these things look like they'll cash flow, but, you know, a lot of the terms of the TIFs we're doing are 10, 15, 20, 25, 30 years, so. Everybody has to realize that every time you borrow TIF money, it's borrowed money. So the city encumbers itself a little bit more with every TIF you do. You assume more risk with every TIF you do. So I'm, I'm kind of concerned that, you know, we're maybe getting to a point where we're taking on too much risk and it's time to not necessarily step back because item number 12 that was up here is something that TIF money is used and you have a development already online, it's going to come in ahead of schedule, the thing is almost shovel ready, these people are ready to develop a new building and stuff there. That's the intent, the basic intent of why the TIF law was developed. Because, you know, you have to see stuff where, where you actually have intent to move forward and not speculation based on, well, we could build 10 warehouses or we could have 20 stores in this area at the end of the day in 20 years. That wasn't the intent of, of establishing TIFs and I'm just concerned that, you know, it may affect the city's ability to move forward with our city services and whatnot in the future if, if we keep borrowing money and, and we do have a downturn or anything else that pops up and we can't predict the future, but I think it would be prudent to look into the big picture here and, and really take task and take this into task and see what we have and when these things are going to come to fruition and, you know, what's the chance of really putting the city in, in hard times if, if we do have an economic downturn and we end up supporting these things, not one or two, but maybe four or five or six of these things for a five or six-year term until they get back on their feet.
Thank you. Steve?
Sorry if I sound like a broken record, but I'll just make my request again regarding the public safety element, consistent with Doug's comments, whether it's allowed by state law or not. If it's a new, new TIF, if it's an existing TIF, if it becomes part of TIF 11, then my comments are moot. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman, go.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. This is obviously, has been envisioned, obviously, since we, this, this project kind of got off its feet, the development of surrounding properties is something we obviously anticipated and we look forward to seeing what the ICAP folks can bring to bear here on these properties. We obviously would look to see or like to see them all moving at the same time and obviously with some, with uses that are, that are obviously synergistic with what's already going on here. But I think our staff in terms of the, Mr. Verhellen's comments on TIF districts, we'll be actually going over those tomorrow night at Budget hearing. Mark, you'll be more than happy to sit on those if you want to simplify, but I, I think our staff has done a tremendous job of structuring and crafting our TIF agreements and managing those TIF, TIF arrangements and, and the debt the city has incurred on behalf of those developers. I think actually, as opposed to the sky is falling kind of way of looking at TIF districts, I look at it as an opportunity that developers see Oak Creek as a place to actually do business and do good things, have staff to work with in, in the, in an environment that actually is pro-business and pro-development and an environment that looks out for its community and I, I think from that standpoint, we're, we're doing a very good job and these three proposals are going to face the same scrutiny that the others have and I think moving forward, we're in good hands and I'm very comfortable with, we'll do what's right for the city when all is said and done.
Thank you. Alderman, Toman.
Is there any anticipation, Doug, of grant or loan with this new TIF district or is this developer funded in your opinion?
I mean, the, the, the business deal has not been established yet, but we, we certainly don't expect it to be at the same level of some of the other districts that you've seen, given that we're here to close gaps and I think. here to close gaps. And I think, I don't know that, and it's certainly up to you as part of when the business deal is brought forward, but to clear the gap here, some of the extraordinary acquisition costs and the environmental costs. And at least at this point, there's been no ask with respect to incentives for specific tenants. But if those were presented, we would certainly bring those forward to the Plan Commission and to the County Council and Joint Review Board.
Chris, anything? Greg?
Just a quick question on the difference, I guess, being that it's right across the street from TID 11. If we're amending boundaries, that would just kind of be absorbed into TID 11. If this is a standalone district, is the potential, kind of like the last one that we just talked about, that it might overperform and we can close it out sooner rather than later?
I certainly think that potential exists, whether it's incorporated into TID 11. And in doing so, and again, we'll investigate both avenues, see which one works best for the city's perspective. But given what we expect to be a very successful district, whether it's standalone or amendment to 11, you're right that whether it's the incoming that's generated within its own district, we don't expect that to go full length in terms of the TIF district. And if it's successful, it would assist in the closure of TID 11. I can't make any representations as to whether I would close it earlier or not, but certainly any excess increment from that development would help the bottom line for 11 as well.
What else? Going forward, Mr. Verhaelen, he does bring up some valid points. And each tid is a little bit unique in its own right, as we've seen on item 12. Some are ready to go and can probably cash out earlier. Others have different aspects to them, such as lakefront. It's an entirely different animal down there. This particular one, I don't think anybody's going to argue it's a unique opportunity. We all know how Drexel Town Square has fed the area and put vibrancy to everything. Regardless, these environmental issues are going to have to be dealt with at some point in time, whether now or later. The cost of waiting could cost the city even more as to not move. I think it's very prudent at this time to explore it the way we're doing it and go down this path. I have every confidence in the staff, as Alderman Gell said, that this will be properly vetted out, and the best financial choice for the citizens will be made. As far as it being ready, I do think the applicant does have something in mind to start paying that payback, as Alderman Lorick said. This one may well overperform and close out early. So, I do think it's an appropriate step to start the ball rolling on this one. Any other comments? Okay, motion?
Charles can make a motion that the council authorize staff to take preliminary steps to create a tax increment financing district for the properties at 330, 400, 410, and 500 West Drexel Avenue.
Oracle's second. Roll call?
Alderman Tolman?
Aye.
Gell?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Item 14, consideration of a motion to authorize staff to take preliminary steps to create a tax increment financing district for the properties at 741 and 1001 West Ryan Road, as well as 9600, 9700, and 9900 South 13th Street. Doug?
Thank you. Capstone Development, along with its partner, General Capital Group, is requesting authorization to take, again, those preliminary steps necessary for the formation of a TIF district. The district, as proposed, would encompass about 137 acres of current agricultural property and county-owned property, with a total of about 88, a little more than 88, developable acres, south and west of the intersection of 13th Street and West Ryan Road. Base value of the district, again, being agricultural, is only $104,200. The proposed district does include the site with proposed Business Park, generally named Brian Business Park. And as proposed, the Business Park would provide up to 1.1 million square feet of Business Park buildings, with an estimated value of about $81 million. Now, given that a portion of the proposed park lies within property currently owned by Moquette County, a land exchange would need to occur. And I think that will, have more details provided by the applicant, as well as in the project narrative that was distributed to you, suffice to say that that process is underway with the county. We have had discussions with the county towards that end. Again, going back to my initial statement about the three items tonight, staff will continue to work with this applicant and all the applicants to provide greater clarity on the parameters of this deal, including in this case, the county land exchange, project costs, and the required district contribution, as well as any necessary financial guarantees to safeguard the city for that. So, again, should council authorize staff to go ahead with this, we take the steps necessary to create the district, including the negotiation of a financial term sheet, as well as any project guarantees, the preparation of a project plan, and the scheduling of the joint review board. And certainly, the council will be kept appraised throughout that entire process. And with respect to the joint review board, the council actually would have representative on that board. Before I turn it over to the applicant for a brief introduction to the project, just wanted to kind of point out a few things. We saw three very different, or we're seeing three very different TIF district proposals here. And this differs from the first two in the sense that it is going out along the more, and I want to say speculative route, because that's not entirely true, but it is taking essentially what is a greenfield, where the other two were taking various forms of brownfields. But with history as a backdrop in southeastern Wisconsin, you'll note that very few, if any, business parks have been developed under market conditions over the last, I would say, the last decade, probably even beyond that. And as we talk in the strategic plan about the element with respect to thoughtful development and a prosperous economy, it really is critical that the city, looking back towards the first district that you authorized staff to look into, as well as some of the other things that we're doing with some, the Oakview Business Park, what have you, it's critical that the city maintain an inventory of what we call shovel-ready sites available to accommodate deals with the marketplace. Certainly, you know, the big news, what's happening in Racine County, there, if that comes to fruition, and we expect that it will, that's going to create opportunities for businesses in that corridor. And I recognize that this site's about 15 to 20 minutes away from that site. So, the one thing that, whether it's at this Business Park, or at Oakview, or any number of different sites within the city, I think we need to be cognizant of, is that when that opportunity knocks, we're ready to answer. And that's really been the MO of this community, is that, I mean, we've been prepared to really, to react to opportunities that are out there. And whether or not you move forward with this district, I think it's important to note that we really, as we see space within our business parks, our Class A business parks filling up, I don't know that we want to be left in a situation where we don't have product available to address needs in the marketplace. So, that's just a comment. Certainly, there's a lot to be said in terms of the review of this district, because it is, quite frankly, a lot more complicated than the first two that you reviewed this evening. But with that, as kind of a backdrop, I'd like to introduce Mike Faber. Mike's with Capstone Development, and Mike's been trying to put this deal together in various stages for the last decade?
Thirteen years. That's why I don't have any hair left on the top of my head.
And Mike can give you, again, the general overview and why he's looking for authorization to proceed with this district at this point.
Thank you, Doug. Mayor Alderperson's. My name's Mike Faber, principal with Capstone Quadrangle. Together with our joint venture partners, we're proposing this approximately 88-acre business park. We were motivated about 13 years ago when we developed our first building in Oak Creek, which is right across 13th Street, facing I-94, based on your comprehensive plan. Everything we're proposing here essentially was motivated by your vision for what should happen with this property to become a high-quality business park. And so, our vision here really is aimed at a Class A business park that's driven significantly by its proximity to a full four-way interchange. So, the business aspects, the tax base, and the jobs, and the buildings that are created primarily want to orient themselves to and from that four-way interchange, which I view as very appealing from a real estate standpoint. But having sat on the government's side of the table, I live in Brookfield, and sat on our Plan Commission for 10 years, and now sit in our Community Development Authority, it's appealing to be able to have tax base and business created that doesn't drag significant traffic through into the depths of the community. That strikes us as an ideal location for a Class A business park. We see the time that it has taken us related significantly to the complexities of the site. There's a lot of emotion. The two biggest property owners, the land has been in their families for plus or minus 100 years. And so, a lot of emotion connected with their land. We are patient. We now control or own all of the parcels except for the county piece, which runs right through the center. And so, accomplishing a swap, which we've been working on with county staff now for about four years, through various iterations, we think we've arrived, together with your staff, Administrator Vickers, and Planner Seymour, at a three-cornered stool that we believe can arrive at a win-win-win for the city, the county, and us as a developer. The site has a unique story. There are a number of interesting aspects that we think are natural outgrowths of understanding the land and where it's been in the past. Right through the center, up through where our main road would come off of Ryan Road, the railroad was originally located in 1872, and it was in 1906 that it was relocated to its current location. And we intend to use some of those features to create a gathering space, an historical monument that can tell the history of the land ownership in this vicinity. We have yet to finish researching where, who Ryan was, that Ryan Road was named after. We're going to be working with the Historical Society on that. And some of those historical aspects give us motivation that can lead to a genuineness that is very appealing, as well as the proximity to the freeway interchange. As Doug mentioned, it would be wonderful if we didn't have to ask for TIF, a tid to be created. But the economics of virtually all decent-sized, Class A business parks in southeastern Wisconsin, to my knowledge, for at least 20 years, doesn't happen. Once the tool is available, and that's what the competition in other communities does, it sets the bar for where the exit value of the land is. And no developer in their right mind will create a business park knowing that they would lose money. But we are optimistic, because all of the components that we've been working on for a long time seem to be aligning, including market conditions. We're very excited about the market conditions. That was the case when we started dreaming about this 13 years ago. It has only gotten better as we come out of the recession. And I say that notwithstanding the potential for, I'll say it as the F-word, Foxconn, to the south. I would frankly be surprised if we didn't see some sort of effect from that, but that's really sort of icing on the cake. We like this project and its location just for the ability to create a Class A business park in its proximity, the interchange all by itself. The vacancy rates for industrial in southeastern Wisconsin, in the South Milwaukee County area, are around 2%, and that's very appealing. We have been working with brokers and prospects. The last time we spoke with the staff, we had one prospect that's now up to three. So, we're excited about that. I know you are being asked tonight only to consider letting the staff investigate this at the appropriate and suitable depth to be able to make recommendations to you. So, I won't go into any more detail, but I'm happy to answer whatever questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Faber?
No question, just kind of, Mike, obviously, we appreciate your commitment to this piece of property. You've been involved, obviously, you said 13 years, and obviously developed the project across 13th Street successfully. So, we appreciate your interest in continuing that relationship with Oak Creek, and we'll trust staff, and Andrew, and Melissa, and the rest of them, to do it on this path as they see fit, and see how the market develops for your proposal, for this development, and for these properties. And when we get to that path and get to that point in time, we'll bring it back and we'll consider what you have to say. Appreciate your interest, though.
Thank you.
Alderman Tolman?
Can you go back to that first slide, Doug? That encompass the residents that put up against Ryan Road? Obviously not.
And maybe Mike can answer that. I mean, at this point, it does not, although I know Mike's been in contact or is looking to consolidate that site. He's...
The residential properties, you can see our piece, we refer to it as the Evershine piece, that we have under contract, that is the small stub where our primary boulevard-type entrance would come off of a signalized intersection with Ryan Road. To the east of that is a stormwater pond for the state from when they rebuilt Ryan Road. And to the east of that are residential properties. None of those residential properties has any interest in selling or having their properties developed ever, as the way they have phrased it.
Maybe it was, are you referring, Mike, to the properties on 13th Street or the ones on Ryan?
Actually, the one on, is that Mr. Titendorf on the corner there?
Yes, Mr. Titendorf is, that land in that corner west of our connection to Ryan Road, Mr. Titendorf is attempting to sell that property, and his expectation, as he's conveyed it to me, is for retail, which of some type or something under the appropriate current zoning, which is consistent with your comprehensive plan. Everything we're talking about for our business park is consistent with your comp plan. I think, in my view, it would make sense for the tid to include the Titendorf property up to the corner, but it wouldn't necessarily be part of our business park. We wouldn't participate in that financially. He intends to sell that separately, and his asking price is significantly higher than industrial buildings can afford to pay.
As this thing is written up here in the description, it says south and west, and that would be south and east.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake.
That's probably...
First, you had me confused. I was turning the map around, but it has to be south and east.
Yes.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Greg? Just kind of addressing some of the previous concerns about, I guess, overextending the city on TIF districts. And the previous two, I can kind of see with the high cost of remediation and everything, and understand this property has been a long time, I mean, looking to be developed and stuff. But I kind of find it hard to not look at Foxconn and all the other development going in the area. That being a major interchange section, obviously, it's an ideal location. I just find it hard to, I guess, look at this as a normal TIF district, as opposed to the other two, like I said, with the high remediation costs. And I know this is only preliminary, getting staff to kind of look into this, but there is, I guess, cost involved, time involved in doing this. And if this is something that myself or other members of the council would end up not supporting, and that would be wasted time, wasted money by asking staff to look into this further.
And just maybe, Greg, for your information, and for the other Alderman, as part of a TIF application, any developer in each one of these properties has filed an application that's accompanied by a $5,000 expense reimbursement agreement, which allows us to draw up on that for some of the preliminary review of the proposal. In the event that TIF goes through, those project costs are added to the district. In the event that it doesn't go through, that's just money that was put into play as part of the application. So, from the standpoint of going to outside resources to evaluate this, whether it's financial, what have you, we do have a pot of money to draw from that's not taken from our general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of comments from my end. In many respects, the iron is hot here, and we need to strike. I just want to, and Mike mentioned a few of them, and some of these he didn't, but I just want to recap why this is an interesting and interesting development proposal. First and maybe even foremost, we have a very competent development team here we'd be working with. I think that goes without saying. There's a really proven track record there among those folks, only half of which are here tonight. And they've been very transparent with the city staff, and we've had a good dialogue, a good dialogue today. The interchange and the improvements beginning next month to that interchange can't go without saying either, that this is a great area, very well improved from an inner... from an interstate connectivity standpoint. It is a perfect location for this type of development. Also, as part of this, we have a rather complicated land exchange with Milwaukee County. And I know the ownership mapping, we don't have the ownership map, mapping incredibly handy, but discussions have proceeded with the developer in the county. The county owns a piece of land that runs basically down the heart of the middle of what this business park would be. You can kind of see the faint outline of the north-south rectangle there where you see the NESS and business. So in terms of the iron being hot, there has been good forward momentum with rectifying that and doing some land exchanges with the county. Because as you can see, if that doesn't get done, we don't have a cohesive development parcel to work with now or in the future. So that's really, you know, harnessing the discussions that have taken place to date on that are really important and, and really, I guess, on the pro side of, of this development. We also have a rail spur that we can take advantage of, and that, that wasn't stated earlier, but there are certainly some market, marketability, some marketability that goes along with, with having that rail spur to the, to the east there for a potential business attract, traction. And reiterating what some have said, a traditional business park, this, this isn't, you know, this isn't fluff universally. It is known that, you know, communities utilize tax increment districts to develop business parks. It, it was not overstated in that there hasn't been, you know, our competitor communities, other communities use tax increment in most, if not all, cases where they're successful. With that all said, one piece of the puzzle that we're missing here is there's no roads developed in this, in this park. And that is the business deal that we are continuing to strive to, continuing to strive towards with the development, with the development team. And, and we will get there. I think, I think it is a great area for what, what the, what the projected uses and the business park concept here, it's a great area for that. A lot of things align. We just need to find a way, and we will find a way, to arrive at, you know, a, a safe investment for the taxpayers of Oak Creek.
Guess I'll throw my two cents in here at the end. We've talked a lot about three different TIFs tonight. It's been quite an education if anybody's watching. This is one that, that is a little bit more complicated. And again, I'm not going to use the word speculative, but it has some moving pieces to it. Andrew brought up the county piece. We don't quite know who's going to be there. Talk about things happening in Racine County. Whether that happens or doesn't happen, this property is what it is and it's, it's very desirable. One thing this city has done long before I ever got here, former councils and former employees, is they did their due diligence and they put things in motion. They prepared us for opportunities that came along. So when things came along, whether it was at this site, the lakefront, wherever it was, we were financially in those positions to do it and we were able to make those choices. This is the same thing. We're doing due diligence to see if this is really something to explore and go down. And this is just the first step in it. Now, along the way, in years past, we've had great counsel, had great financial people, both internally and the people we hire. And that's what enables us to make these decisions, whether it's the interchange or what have you. And that's what keeps the momentum and things growing. So this is really preparation meeting opportunity if anything ever comes south. But we're getting this land prepared for whatever it's going to be. And I think this is the due diligence, the first step in the due diligence to do this, to see what, what comes of it. So I, I do support going forward, at least with the application and finding out, you know, what, what we can make of it. We're doing our part. This land, we may go down this path and, and find out of the clear blue somebody completely different or completely different use for it. Hard to say. Again, it's probably a little overemphasized with the expectations down in Racine County. But even without that, just given this location off I-94 and the things Oak Creek's been blessed with, I, I really think we have to do our due diligence and move down the path. Would anybody else like to add?
Alderman Gale?
Thanks, Mayor. I mean, I would echo those two. And we have talked, staff and Mike, as, as this has kind of percolated all along, that, you know, striking my iron is hot here, so to speak, on multiple fronts. Dealing with this county situation where you potentially could put land back into the functional tax base out of, out of the county, with their cooperation would be significantly additive on this particular property and having turnkey industrial sites ready for development for whatever should come to pass, I think is, is a really strong asset for the city and a, and a great position for the city to be in.
Thank you. Alderman Kerkowski?
Previous public safety comments apply here. You know, I just want to preserve the record, speaking legally here, thanks, like a lawyer.
Motion?
It moves to authorize staff to take preliminary steps to create, create a tax increment finance district for the properties at 741 and 1,001 West Ryan Road, as well as 9,600, 9,700 and 9,900 South 13th Street.
Kerkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Seeing as we have kind of a lengthy agenda, would anybody like to take a five-minute break? Moving on. Are we okay to keep going?
Come on, you're about halfway done with community development.
Chris, you need a break? Okay, go ahead. We'll just take a couple minutes siesta here. 01717, a resolution approving a fourth amendment to the Tax Increment District 11 Finance Development Agreement. Oh, shoot, I'm sorry. Did I overjump 15? I did. As long as I read it, let's, let's go, let's go through 16. I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
We can't do 16 without doing 17.
Oh. We're doing 16. Okay. Go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you, Mayor. This is fairly straightforward, I think, as outlined in the council report. You have seen this project. It is moving along, moving right along, ready for completion in the near future. This is the Marriott Town Place Suites in Drexel Town Square. This is a proposed fourth amendment extending the date for completion of construction from December 1st to January 31. It is still anticipated that the hotel will be open sooner than that, but due to lender requirements, the developer has made this request, asking the city to give that breathing room and to comply with their lender requirements.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the council? Seeing done, motion?
Court moves that the council adopt Resolution Number 11867-101717, Resolution approving a fourth amendment to Tax Incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement, Drexel Square Hotel Group, Inc.
Kerkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Thank you. If we could go back to item 15, an ordinance, consideration of ordinance number 2872 adopting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the properties at 1,700, 1,750, 1,800, 1,816, 1,820, 1,830, 1,848, 1,850, 1,900, and 1,920 West Drexel Avenue. Doug?
Thank you, and appreciate your, your patience with all the community development stuff tonight. Walden Oak Creek LLC is requesting that the planned use category, I'm sorry, the planned land use category and map in the comprehensive plan for these properties are updated from single-family residential plan mixed use. And there's a certain portion of that, that's resource protection area or limited development area that is not changing. You recall that the properties to the north of this were changed from a very similar designation or actively, active park and recreation being in Falk Park to the planned mixed use in anticipation of a rezoning to the B6 interchange, retail, sorry, it's been a long night, and the ultimate development of that as part of the IKEA store. The ownership of those part, that parcel and several of the parcels to the south will result in additional retail, a potentially additional retail along those properties that were required by Walden Oak Creek LLC. And as a precursor to that development, that rezoning, the land use plan needs to be changed from the single-family residential to planned mixed use on these properties. Again, recognizing that the westernmost property adjacent to IKEA Way is, is actually owned by the city and is part of the infrastructure for that intersection, so that will remain as limited development area. The proposal also does include, in addition to the lands that are owned or under contract by Walden Oak Creek LLC, it does also include two properties which are not part of their ownership. But certainly, at this stage, with respect to identifying the future land use of those parcels, it is entirely appropriate to include them as part of the planned mixed use designation, even though they are not part of the landholdings of the applicant at this point in time. And any proposal to rezon those properties would need to come from those individual property owners. With that being said, on October 10th of this year, following a public hearing notice in the paper, the Plan Commission held a, a public hearing on this proposed change to the, the planned use map, planned land use map as part of the comprehensive plan. And they have recommended to the council that these properties be changed to planned mixed use and again, with the one property remaining limited development area in recognition of its, its use as infrastructure for that intersection.
Thank you, Doug. Questions, comments? Nothing? Anything from the applicant? Nothing? Okay. Motion?
Court moves that the council adopt ordinance number 2872, an ordinance adopting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the properties at 1,700, 1,750, 1,800, 1,816, 1,820, 1,830, 1,848, 1,850, 1,900, and 1,920 West Drexel Avenue.
Kerkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Having done 16, it moves us on to 17, Consideration of a Resolution Number 11864-101717, Terminating the Development Agreement Between Goodwill Industries of Southeastern Wisconsin, Inc. and the City of Oak Creek for the Goodwill Project at 140 East Rossin, Project Number 09050. Mike?
I could take this, Mayor. Thanks. Council might want to take a look. Item 17, 18, and 19 are all related. They are to the, the 140 East Rossin Avenue, the former, the property that was going to be developed by Goodwill Industries. Looks like this took place back about 10 years ago, 2007, I see on some of the documents. But at any rate, that the, the Goodwill development has gone away. They actually have developed that, those plans elsewhere. And the property is being looked at by another development. And the current property owner, as they approach closing, wanted to make a clean cut from these agreements that they had with the city. And this one, item 17, is related to the development agreement. And that would pertain to the commitments they made for public infrastructure that they needed as they, as they proceeded. In this case, it pertained to centers who are only, they did not develop, they did not do the sanitary sewer, and they have provided the documents for signature to basically be released from that development.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions from Mike? Motion?
Kerkowski makes a motion that the council adopt Resolution Number 11864-101717, Terminating the Development Agreement Between Goodwill Industries of Southeastern Wisconsin, Inc. and the City of Oak Creek for the Goodwill Project at 140 East Rossin Avenue, Project Number 09050.
Lorick, second. Roll call.
Alderman Lorick?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
18 is also a consideration of a Resolution Number 11865-101717, Releasing Goodwill Industries of Southeastern Wisconsin, Inc. from the Stormwater Management Practices Maintenance Agreement for the Goodwill Project Proposed at 140 East Rossin Avenue, Tax Key Number
Mike, you're up again. So, yes, this is the same situation here. They did not do any work towards development of the property, so they did not do any storm sewer installation, no, no detention bonds or anything like that related to grading. So same situation, they would just like to be released from that agreement.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions? Rock, motion?
Kerkowski makes a motion that the council adopt Resolution Number 11865-101717, Releasing Goodwill Industries of Southeastern Wisconsin, Inc. from the Stormwater Management Practices Maintenance Agreement for the Goodwill Project that was proposed at 140 East Rossin Avenue.
Lorick, second. Roll call.
Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Item 19 also deals with Goodwill, I believe it's the last one, Consideration of Resolution Number 11869-101717, Approving the Release from a Service and Assessment Agreement with Goodwill Industries of Southeastern Wisconsin.
Thanks, I'll, I'll take that one. It's a little bit different in the sense that when Goodwill, for its first rezon, the property was rezoned and the, the plans for that were approved, being a nonprofit, the city entered into Goodwill, with a, with Goodwill on essentially an agreement which allowed for the additional payment for services in lieu of taxes for that property. Obviously, since the property was never developed for the intended purposes, the, the need for that agreement is, there's no longer need for that. And in fact, under the terms of the agreement, it's already expired. But again, in order to give that kind of clean slate for the transfer and sale of that property, since the initial service agreement was adopted by resolution of the council, was appropriate that the release of that resolu, that service agreement by the council also occur via resolution.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Any questions? Motion?
Kerkowski makes a motion, council adopt Resolution Number 11869-101717, Approving a Release from a Service and Assessment Agreement with Goodwill Industries of Southeast Wisconsin.
Court, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Item 20, it's Consideration of a Motion to Decline the Fire Department Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, the SAFER Act Grant for Three Firefighters. Chief Rosendich?
From previous discussions at other meetings, I guess this is the bottom of the ninth, two are out. I got two strikes on me and the guy pitching throws 102 mile fastball, so I'm, I'm got my back against the wall, but I have just some, a couple more statements. Alderman Lorick had asked, asked me for some information on the grant. And one of the things that we looked at and wasn't included in, in the, the packet was the cost. And if you take it out four years, which is the, when the grant expires and it's all, and you compare the recommendation at the budget hearing the other day of the two people, the police and fire personnel versus the grant, it's about $150,000 difference where the cost of the two personnel outweighs the SAFER grant. And I just want to bring that forward, that there is that cost and that this doesn't even account for any of the overtime that would be impacted in, in that process. So, and, and again, reiterating the fact of, of looking at what coming down the pike for this developments, looking out crystal ball four years, and, and I know we're all in this dilemma, how are we going to get the people and how are we going to pay for it? We know we're there. The SAFER grant gives us a half a million dollars from the federal government to move this forward. And, and I just kind of want to put that as a last minute swing.
I can, I can provide some flavor to this, too. And, and, you know, clearly, the, the fire chief and myself are at odds with this, but I do, I do appreciate the extension of the respect that, that Tom and, and Chief Kresic have, have granted me in this regard, and I hope that the feeling is mutual and that we've, we've, we've talked about this quite a bit and they know where, where I stand. for the position I'm taking and the recommendation I made to the council in the staff report. You know, just to recap, for those who are at home, the city did receive a SAFER grant, which included funding for three additional firefighter positions here in the City of Oak Creek. The SAFER grant is a very attractive and useful grant program that the federal government has, probably the most lucrative. I don't know that there's better out there in terms of staffing. There is just one really simple issue with the SAFER grant, and that funding is not in perpetuity. So at some point, year four, after the grant kind of draws down gradually, the City of Oak Creek is left with a liability that, right now, we have no idea how we would, how we could or would meet. We do not know the budgetary circumstances of years down the road, and that concerns me. That's not how I approach my personal finances, and it certainly isn't a way that I want to approach the city's finances. With that said, though, we did have some strategies, and we did deploy some strategies. The staff, as well as the Personnel Committee, did deploy some strategies in trying to work with the labor union to arrive at some language to bring these positions on in a more manageable way for the city management. And for many reasons, those discussions didn't yield exactly the end product that we wanted, or the Personnel Committee personally, or Personnel Committee and myself personally required wherein we could have gotten comfortable, I could have gotten comfortable with spending tomorrow's dollars today. I think there was an achievement of a nice compromise at our budget workshop on Friday, where although we decided that the funding priority would be both, where the funding priority would not rest with three additional firefighters, however, taking a more incremental approach and funding these firefighter positions as we can, as we know that year's budget or the next year's budget, and not having an unfunded liability. And I did not ever agree with putting the council in a position to, well, if we can't figure it out in three years, in four years, then we'll just have positions go unfilled. That's not a responsible approach, in my opinion, and not a position I wanted to put this council in. With all of that said, what the compromise that we achieved was, is that included in our recommended draft budget, we had two police positions, fully funded, and in lieu of an additional three firefighters utilizing the SAFER grant, we were directed as a staff to put in the budget moving forward, instead of two patrol officers, one patrol officer and one firefighter, that are fully funded. And I thought that was a really, a really good compromise that we all arrived at. And, you know, again, taking just a little more of an incremental approach to looking at our finances here as we know them today versus trying to guess what they might be three and four years down the road. So with that, the recommendation in the staff report reflects that funding priority that the council had arrived at at our budget workshop on Friday.
Before I open it up to the council, we do have one citizen that wishes to speak. Come on up, Mark.
Mark Verhaelen, 1200 East Dryden Road. About six months ago, this came before the council for the fire department to go for the SAFER grant. I was on the council at that time, I voted to have them go forward and apply for the grant. Looks like tonight they've achieved what they started out to do, and that was get the grant, or it's been approved. I guess I'm looking at the council here tonight to make a proactive decision. In the last year or so, I know we've put on internal staff within the city hall confines here, and needed or not, department heads, no matter who they were, attained extra staff because they felt they were needed. I think the fire department and the police department wouldn't be up asking for personnel if they didn't think it was necessary. Tonight, you've tentatively approved a new subdivision plat, there's going to be 600 new apartments right next door here within the next couple of years, there's another 390 of them right down the road here that are coming online right now, as well as some other multifamily and probably some more residential developments coming. That being said, there's great potential for the City of Oak Creek's population to grow exponentially in the next four to five years. Now, if you're not out ahead of the curve, I guess is the way to put it, you'll be sitting here trying to figure out how to maybe put four, or five, or six people on at one time if that does happen here, and it looks like it's going to happen. And it's not just because of what's happening in Oak Creek, it's what's happening in Franklin, it's what's happening in Greenfield, it's what's happening down the road in Racine County. And if you're not proactive, and you don't fund these things, you have three years to figure out how to, if it's necessary, cut something from someplace else. You know, if you have a couple of these tax incremental financing districts that come to fruition before they're supposed to, maybe you'll have enough money in the budgets to fund the necessary people. But myself and Alderman Guzekowski, when it comes to public safety, we had a chance last year to participate in the fire ops demonstrations down at MATC. And I think until you've gone through something like that, to see, especially fire, when you're sending people into burning buildings and whatnot, you know, you don't want to send people into a situation like that where you're understaffed. And, you know, that's going to lead to bad things, whether it's somebody that works on the fire department, somebody that works as a first responder on the police department, responding to accidents or whatever. I mean, this is an area here where, as elected officials, we're obligated, and that's our duty, one of the first duties to the citizens here is public safety. And if you can't provide adequate public safety, everything else careens out of control without it. And, you know, Milwaukee's seeing that right now. Their public safety is kind of in a mess, they're cutting even more staff, because maybe the mayor likes a trolley running around downtown better than he likes public safety. But, you know, you can see, you can have big fancy buildings and, you know, fancy restaurants up and down the road, but if you don't have the public safety, that people know that they can go to these venues and be safe at night, during the day, or on weekends, you know, it's all for naught. And we've had a good example of that, was in the Oak Creek Pictorial, again, or Oak Creek Now, a couple of weeks ago, and I just raised cane at the school board, where I'm still a member. Being that we didn't find out about this until I read it in the paper, we weren't informed, we had a big brawl at McDonald's right over next to the high school here a couple of weeks ago, 40 or 50 students, 4:30 after school. And, you know, if you don't have enough people to respond to stuff like this, and it shouldn't happen to start with, school system, school district, our superintendent and whatnot, should have had policies in place to prevent some of this stuff, because we had some of this stuff at the beginning of the year last year, and we thought we had stuff instituted, they weren't doing it properly, and that's going to be addressed at our future meeting. But, back to the public safety end of it, you can't expect understaffed, underfunded, you know, public safety people to be responding to things like that. And what it does, it takes away from the businesses themselves, because the clientele that go to, whether it's Pick 'n Save, McDonald's, Noodles across the street, some of the venues here, if they know they can't be safe, they won't return, or they won't come here in the first place. And then your businesses start to suffer, they move, people don't, you know, patronize the business and stuff, it all careens out of control. And we're certainly not to a point like that. But, you know, this is something where a chance to get, you have a chance to be proactive, fund the people that they need, you're going to get $500,000 here to help fund these positions for the first three years, and it gives the city ample time to plan and implement these positions in the future. So I think you should move forward and let the fire chief fund the positions that he's asking for.
Thank you.
Mayor, just a quick comment on a couple items, I think, you know, some good points brought up there. What the compromise that we struck at the budget workshop demonstrated, and maybe it needs to be explicitly stated, the council is going to address the public safety needs of the community. Intuitively, the public understands that the community is growing like gangbusters, and we have to grow resources, we have to grow specifically public safety resources as we grow this community. So, moving forward, the council will be tasked with continuing to figure out a way to incrementally improve those resources, but that's the key word, incrementally, and as we know we can, not as we think we might be able to. I think that's really important. We have, you know, different facts and circumstances every single budget that we grapple with. This year, we had a lot of flexibility. We addressed public safety needs in both departments with that budget, within that budget, and fully funded those positions. So I don't want, I don't want there to be any doubt that I personally, or the council, doesn't take the needs that we have in the city, specifically, public safety needs, very seriously. It's just a matter, a different manner of how we're going to get there.
Thank you. This time, we'll open it up to the council. Comments, questions? Alderman Kirkowski.
When we first talked about the SAFER grant, I had occasion just to briefly talk with the Fire Chief Rosendich about, you know, my history, or everyone's history of knowing what the COPS program brought to the table. I don't think Oak Creek ever used the COPS program, did they, Chief Anderson? Okay. But, you know, again, it's the same, I, when I lived in other cities, they got cops on the street for the COPS program, and then three years later, they had to lay off the cops because they didn't have the money to pay for them. So my concern was, hey, let's put in for the grant, let's get these, let's see if they will fund the officers. But it seems like it has come to fruition, is that in three years, we may not have the money to pay for the firemen that we get under this grant, at least that's the way I see it. And the ugliest sentence you want to say, whether you're an elected official or where you work for the city, is we have to lay off firemen. Now, the guy to the north seems to be able to get away with that all the time, but I don't want to be responsible for laying off firemen. But, we weren't going to have the money in the first place, we would have money for three years, and then unfortunately, the money dries up. So, while I'm sad that we're not going to get three, and I'm at least happy that we're going to get something, is what I'm trying to say, is, that's it. Thank you.
Alderman Lurk.
Just going back, I guess, addressing my comments at the budget meeting, and no disrespect to either department, I think I did bring up that when I hear from residents, the main thing that people are asking for is, we need more police in Oak Creek, that's what I hear from everybody. And I think that's why we kind of steered towards the, we can fund one police, one firefighter. But then going back to Chief's comment, and me coming from the medical examiner's office, I saw so many drug overdoses coming through the medical examiner's office, and that is the unlucky ones, that doesn't account for all the lucky ones that the fire department is able to respond to and save. And I feel that that's something that doesn't at home with the citizens in Oak Creek until it hits close to home for them. So they're not in the big uproar, we need more firefighters, we need more firefighters, knowing very well that both departments need to expand. So I guess looking at this, at this grant, yes, in three years, at this point, we don't know where the funding would come from for the three firefighters. However, as of this coming budget, we're willing to fund two positions. So I almost look at it as a catalyst for, not how are we going to fund these positions, but more of a, we have to find a way to fund these positions, because in three years, at the rate the city is growing, both departments are going to need to expand in some way. So I feel that the chief kind of looked outside the box at a way to expand the department, and they were awarded this grant. And I mean, I look at it as a good way of funding the positions that are needed, if just for a start.
Thank you. Alderman Toman.
I chair the Personnel Committee, and we've had lengthy discussions on this with the chief's staff, city administrator, all over the board with our alderman. We have a committee that consists of three aldermen, which is half of this council. So basically, what this decision comes down to tonight is how the rest of the council is going to vote on this, because it was a unanimous agreement, or across the board consensus that we turn down the SAFER grant. I won't go over the, all the particulars of the issue, because I think our city administrator outlined them pretty well. I'm in agreement with what he just said tonight. In the past, we have not turned down any equipment requests from the fire and police department. Both chiefs know that. Safety issues, when it comes to any equipment, clothing, guns, you name it, the Personnel Committee has, across the board, supported this police and fire department throughout the years, I think they'll both agree on that. What this came down to was basically a cost at the end of the SAFER grant, how do we pay for it? We chose the path to pay for it on a pay-as-you-go basis, what we could afford now. But we've heard some alarming things out of the police department and Personnel Committee. Police are starting to stack calls, they're understaffed, all the retail concerns, of all the retail, it's gone up, all the calls that have increased. What was the other issue, too, with PD? I'm missing one, but stacking calls, and help me out, chief. Yeah. Anyway, we determined in the end that the PD is where the most help was needed. And that's not to take away from the increase in calls in the fire department, I know you're going to hear the chief come back on that, and Mike, you're probably going to come back with that, too, and that's out there. Ultimately, I think what this, how this is going to play out in the future, and to Mark Verhaelen's comments, I believe that it should go to the people. I should, I believe there should be a referendum. I mentioned that in strategic planning, I didn't get a lot of support for it. How that plays out in the future, we'll see. But ultimately, I think you take it to the people, and they make the decision if we want more police and fire. When they see crime rise, or they see maybe a delayed ambulance call on response times, or a fire call where there's a delayed response time, that's the time to say to the people, can we afford this, or can't we? They ultimately have to make the decision. Just a handful of people in the city should not be making this decision, that's my opinion. And one other thing I have to add, as far as the cost goes, I've been on the council now for 14 years. When we got the mitigation money from We Energies, we looked at the cost of adding three firefighters and three police officers. And I can tell you from personal experience, the cost was in the neighborhood of $80,000, that's with benefits per personnel. So that comes to a quarter of a million dollars for three personnel on each department. Now, that cost has increased, and I don't know if the council is fully aware of it, it's increased to $122,000 per firefighter, per police officer, with benefits. That's at a journeyman's scale, that's after your three or four years, after you go through your steps. So that cost has increased huge. And just to say we can add personnel to this department, add personnel to that department, that's fine, but you have to look at the total costs at the end of the, at the end of the game. So that's what we're dealing with here. And I wish I could think of that other issue that you threw out. Yeah, okay. That's it, that's all I've got.
Okay. Alderman Gale, anything?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I sit on Personnel with Mike and Rich, and we've wrestled with the SAFER grant and the potential needs for safety services across the board for years now. And we've considered the SAFER grant, along with the request from the PD. Andrew, I believe, has crafted a budget that works within our restraints of our financial situation here, given the expenditure restraint, our budgetary situation in a prudent fashion. You know, the city is well-served, as we sit already with our safety services, and we're actually... with our, with our safety services, and we're actually adding resources to both. So, I think that, that's an important, an important way to look at things, that, you know, service levels are not going to decrease here. They're, they're actually, we're actually having, adding resources to both here. But, from a, from a financial management standpoint, obviously, these are the two hu, these are the two biggest budget items in our, in our, in our ledger. Every year, we, we have to consider how they're going to be funded moving forward. You know, I know the, the number's been brought up that it's, you know, half a million dollars of free money. Unfortunately, you have to look at the other side of that. It's not, you have shared costs for those three years, and actually, those shared costs goes up every year. You know, at, year three, year three, you're paying 80 or 75% of the cost of these, of these additional personnel, if you accept the SAFER grant, and in year four, they're all yours. So, that's, Andrew's got a number here, they're potentially 477, potentially $500,000 of money you need to make sure you're able to fund at year four, which is, uh, which is a situation that you should not step into lightly, given the fact that we have seen our hands tied from budgetary standpoint here for four, five, six years that I've, that I've obviously been, been here with, with Bridget's help and, and the financial staff here. So, that is a major consideration. You know, we tried to work in a partnership with the, with the firefighters here to add some, add some language that would give the chief and staff here to manage these positions in a, in a way that would significantly address the cost side, manage overtime. We were not able to make a lot of progress on that outside the bargaining agreement, so that is what it is. But, I think moving forward, I think the prudency is the way to really look at this, and, and the funding, the detective, the dispatch maneuver, holding in the four part-timers and the two full-time, and the one patrol officer along with one firefighter is, is a very prudent and effective way to look at our incremental resources and applying them as across the organization. So, I, I support Andrew's plan here, and, and obviously, as the time moves forward, I think we'll have the, hopefully have the flexibility to consider additional resources to both departments moving forward.
Alderman Guzakowski, anything?
It's kind of all been said. You know, I'm, I know we, as Alderman Lark mentioned, we had some very good, long, and hard discussion about this at the budget workshop last Friday, and some good conversation going back and forth. And there are needs everywhere in the city, whether it's streets, or in this building here, or at the, you know, police and fire department. And so, we just need to be prudent about moving forward and, and what we do here. So, I, I understand the SAFER grant, how valuable that could be right now. But again, we have to find a way to pay for it at the end.
Thank you.
My, my other one.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
The, the chief has, has reiterated that the department itself has become reactive instead of proactive, and that's huge. You got that one too. Yeah, you, you know, it, all, as aldermen, you're getting calls in your neighborhood on speeding and various lighter issues that still need to be looked into, but the PD is out on calls, and you're, you're not getting the routine. I'm not seeing them as much in my neighborhood as I used to. They're out on calls. And if aldermen want to address those issues, you need, you need squads on the road, and you need, you need personnel to address those things. If you're out on, you're, you're doing major crime investigations, or you're do, and you're, you're tied up, it, it, just example for the evening, I know 13th and 27th Street, demand almost the whole force. I mean, the, the rest of the city has no coverage at certain times. So, that was another part of the decision. Thank you.
Um, I, I guess I'll just weigh in on it. Either way, disappointed. We talked about being proactive. I think this grant was being very proactive to try, try to address our problems. I, I understand all your points. I, I get them. It, it would have been great if we could have been proactive, except that this ain't got going, because quite frankly, at the rate we're growing, we're going to need people at some point in time. I understand in the fourth year, they'll all be ours. But, without the grant, they're going to all be ours at some point anyways, whether it's now or four years. I, I do think the compromise was, was, was good, without a doubt. Alderman Gale brought up, you know, we're under some, some really tough things going on here, budget-wise. We just, we can't fund them right now. We're, we are being very responsible and paying for what we have right in front of us. Would have been great to put those tools out there. Probably would have been, probably a little more realized savings in overtime possibly. But, nobody has that crystal ball. We don't know. We haven't added staff in well over 10 years. We've replaced retirements. But, we haven't. We've grown the city, but we haven't grown our departments. And that includes our street department, too. You know, our services will start to suffer. It's easy to kick around Milwaukee. They're experiencing it much quicker than we are, but we're all on the same boat at some point in time. So, Alderman Toman brought up referendum. There's a few communities going to that. South Milwaukee has a, a deal going out there. They're surveying people as how they feel. They're at that point where they have no other alternative, as well as Franklin. So, we may well reach that point. I think, I think Alderman's Toman's point is, is probably the most valid of them all. This should be a community decision. And I, and I'm not going to weigh the importance of police or fire, either one, because depending on your emergency, that guy's more important to you. If you need the firemen, or you need the policemen. They're both vital to this city, and they're some of the essential services that make this place worth, worth living in, and give us the quality of life we got. So, either way, I, I think we're making a step in the right, right direction. We are addressing the need for protective services in the city. I, I certainly wish we could do more. But, at this point in time, as Andrew Vicker said, this is the prudent decision, and it is a step forward, and we know we can pay the bill when the time comes. With that, I'll, I'll ask you guys if you've got any last things. If not, a motion.
Gale, a move to decline the fire department staffing for adequate fire and emergency response act grant for three firefighters.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Lark?
No.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to engineering. Item 21 is a consideration of resolution number 11871-101717, approving a water main easement by and between Walden OC LLC and the city of Oak Creek, tax key number 762-9992-00376, and also 762-9991-003. Mike, or, Mike, you got that one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Sounds like an engineering deal.
Well, I, I have a graphic up here on the screen that you probably are all familiar with. We've, we've shown this on a number of occasions, as, as this is a part of the IKEA Way development, the roadway and the utilities. And so, if I can draw your attention to the graphic, the blue is the Phase 3, and that, that is what we are dealing with here, really on items 21, 22, and 23 on the agenda. And that entails the, the closing of the loop for the water mains. So, the water main, which was constructed in Phase 1 and Phase 2 up to the north end here, the, the green that you see, terminated with the last project, which was completed last summer. And then, we did get approval for, for design and completion of that loop out to 27th Street along that blue alignment that you see on the graphic. So, but, but item 21, we are dealing with the need to enter into a water main easement, obtain a water, water main easement from Walden OC LLC, which is Northwestern Mutual. They are the owners of the property. And my understanding that was passed out to the council members was a revised document just before the meeting, and that's what you have before you. Due, due to time constraints, we had proposed two resolutions. Item 21, which is the permanent water main easement, and then 22, which was a temporary construction easement, that followed that same alignment. They're both needed to, to get in there, to do the work to pu, to install the water main, and to have enough space to do the grading, to do the tree clearing, and, and have the construction equipment moving, moving around in, in the process. So, again, because of time constraints, we did re, we did receive some revisions, requested revisions to the document from the property owner, and that is that revised easement that was handed out to you before the meeting. What that does is, it, it takes the two, the two separate agreements and, and combines them into one, which is the permanent water main easement. And the temporary construction easement, it also adds a third element, which is a temporary access easement, which is, which would be needed for the early stages of the project, where we have to cross over an existing stream crossing. And then, of course, that is a, a limited term easement. So, the, the, the third element of this is item 23, which is, which is the request to award the, the water main project that was led out to bid last week. But, it is important that we get these eas, the easement approved in and order, of course, before we could be on-site doing the, the construction of the water main. So, Melissa, did I, it got a little hairy on that description.
Uh, I think that was perfectly said by Mike, actually. And the bottom line is that staff's recommendation to council is to adopt the resolution in item 21, and then to file the resolution in item 22.
Just another quick comment from my end that I, I really don't think can go unsaid. You, you all recall an amendment to the IKEA Development Agreement. And the way that the Development Agreement was set up mechanically, the next statement I say is true in that really IKEA, with, with some rare exception for certain pieces that benefit Northwestern Mutual, and that they're paying for, as you'll see in a later memo, you know, fundamentally here, functionally, IKEA is paying for this water main out to 27th Street. And there's still additional project costs that IKEA afforded the city within that Development Agreement. So, again, I think we had a long, lengthy discussion over the winter months and into the spring on that, on that amendment. But, speaking to the character of the, of the developer and the, and the business that we're bringing into the community here, saw, yes, a benefit to, to their store, but certainly saw a huge benefit to the development area. The city and the property owners along the pathway helped the city get that done on, on their dime. So, I thought that was worth, worth restating here this evening.
Listen, so the verbiage for 21 works, given?
It does work, Alderman Gale. I can say that in our work with Northwestern Mutual, they've been a masterful partner in pulling a lot of agreements together in quick order to allow work to be done throughout the city. And that's happened again here. As you see, what was included in the council packet has been encapsulated into one easement that comports with all the needs that I think certainly satisfy what the city's looking for, to get the construction done, but then also for the property owner. We appreciate that quick turnaround.
We're going to move on 21, file 22?
Correct.
Ma'am, ready? Motion.
Corkel, move that the council adopt resolution number 11871-101717, resolution approving a water main easement by and between Walden OC LLC and the city of Oak Creek.
Corkel, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski?
Aye.
Lark?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
We pretty much covered resolution, the consideration of resolution in 22. Any questions concerning it?
It takes a motion, Melissa?
Yes, it would be a motion to file resolution number 11872, et cetera.
Lark moves that the council will file resolution number 11872-101717, a resolution approving a temporary construction easement by and between Walden OC LLC and the city of Oak Creek.
Kerkowski will second then.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Lark?
Aye.
Item 23 is a consideration of a motion to award that water main work. Mike?
Yeah, so, as I stated earlier, the, the project was designed and advertised for bid. Bids were opened last Thursday, October 12th. We had to fairly quick turn around on the evaluation of the bids and, and the council report, and see kind of a spread on the bids. We had two that were under the 700,000 limit. Five of them that were in the mid 700s, none in the 800s, and then three that were over 900,000. So, quite the spread, but the, we were very thankful for the two low bids. They were within 3.5% of each other. So, at least those two were competitive. It was, it was a little high. This does fall within our, our budgetary estimates. So, you know, we bring the, the request to award to SuperXe scavators, the low bidder.
Mike, can you just, we've worked with SuperX before.
Yes. Yeah, they, they were the underground contractor of all of Druxel Town Square, and, and they've been on various developments for, for, for decades, really. So, yes, yeah. So, a, along with this, there, there is a, a city portion of, of the project, and then there is a, the commitment from NML, or a, a portion of the work that will facilitate getting the road constructed eventually. And that, of course, helps their development, the development of their property. So, just, just a breakdown of that, I think we have a, the, the bid prices come in at around 161,000 for, for the culvert, the box culvert work, that NML has provided assurance that they would reimburse those costs. Then, that would leave a balance of, of 513,000 for the, the city's work, the water main.
Great. Thank you for that, Mike.
We, one, one quick comment we do have, just for your comfort level. We do have a letter of understanding or a letter of agreement from NML, you know, acknowledging the fact that these costs are theirs, and they'll reimburse the city within 30 days of us invoicing them for the, I, I think we had a little bit of an allowance, but up to 165,000 for the items Mike just mentioned.
Questions, comments? Motion?
Corkle moves that the council award the IKEA Way Phase 3 Water Improvement Unit Price Contract to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, SuperXe scavators, Inc., at the estimated cost of 674,189.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Lark?
Aye.
Toman?
Item 24, consideration of resolution number 11866-101717, approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with the Villa Healthcare for the Villa at Oak Creek Development located at 2700 West Hattledale Boulevard. Mike?
So, this is, uh, we've seen a number of these as, as development proceeds through the city. The standard stormwater management maintenance agreement, this is an agreement that gets signed by the property owner, gets recorded with the Register of Deeds, and provides that they will take care of their detention ponds and, and, and other facilities related to stormwater management.
Questions?
Greg?
I'm just curious on the project. Do they know when they're going to start breaking ground and things like that?
They have their permitting in place, and honestly, I haven't been by that site in a while, but I know that it was probably a month ago that they were, they were really pressing to, to, you know, get out there and be able to put up their cell phones and start going. I don't know where they're at at this point, to be honest.
Thank you. Anything else? Motion?
Corkle moves that the council adopt resolution number 11866-101717, a resolution approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with Villa Healthcare, 3755 West Chase Avenue, Skokie, Illinois, 60076, for their Villa at Oak Creek Development located at 2700. at 2700 West Hanadel Boulevard.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Item 25 is consideration of a motion to enter into a local county agreement with Milwaukee County for the cost sharing of the county's 13th Street reconstruction project. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. This is, as I referenced earlier, the county plans to do the reconstruction project, begin the reconstruction project at least in 2018. This is 13th Street from Drexel to Rossin. And they are getting considerable federal funding on the project. The project estimate is $4.8 million. There are some items of work that will be completed under the contract that are available back to the city. And these are, I would say, on a relatively small scale, again, given the $4.8 million estimate, a total of $33,631.75. These are the estimates, so it will be in that range anyways. The breakdown of that is $2,351.75, which is just 20% of the cost share of the emergency vehicle preemption for the traffic signals at Drexel and 13th Street. And then there are the balance of that, the $31,280 is the 100% of the costs for sanitary sewer manhole and water valve adjustments. And we did have a conversation with Ron Pritzloff with the Water Sewer Utility. He did sign the council report, so he is aware of those charges that would come their way.
Questions, comments?
Dan, just a...
I'm sorry, Ken?
Greg's got something. Just a comment that, obviously a long time coming on this leg of this project, but we appreciate the county's supervisors' Taylor's commitment to actually get this thing done. They've committed some significant resources to 13th Street. I know most folks assume it's our road, but technically theirs. So we appreciate their commitment and their... Even though it's taken some doing, even minimal cost to us for a... But will have significant impact on our residents, we appreciate their work.
Greg? I agree, a long time coming. Has there been any talk or discussion about south of Drexel, namely around the middle school area?
Not really. I mean, they milled and overlaid that two years ago. And our experience has been is that we probably won't see them out there for a little while.
Although I think it's officially under planning, you know, 2022 or something.
Anyone else? Motion?
Kerkowski, go ahead. Well, first district. Go ahead. Go. Oh, first district. Second? Whoever rates these up is wrong. Kerkowski make a motion to approve a motion to enter into a local county agreement with Milwaukee County for cost sharing of the county's 13th Street reconstruction project.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Item 26 is consideration of a motion to enter into a local county agreement with Milwaukee County for cost sharing of the county's intersection improvement projects at 6th Street and Rossin Avenue and 10th Street and Rossin Avenue. Mike?
So this is similar. The county does, they have jurisdiction on Rossin Avenue, which is County Truck Highway BV, and they have plans to do intersection improvements, 6th and Rossin and 10th and Rossin, which would include new traffic signals, some turn lane expansions, better signage and visibility, and revised cycle timing on the signals for better traffic flow. And the city's responsibility would be for a cost share of the emergency vehicle preemption, the EVP component of the traffic signals. And the agreement outlines that the city is paying just 10% of the cost of those. So fairly low cost, again, less than $2,600 is the estimate. It would be replacing the EVP that is currently at 10th and Rossin and then putting EVP as a first-time installation at 10th and Rossin. So we're getting pretty close to having all the traffic signals with the EVP capabilities throughout the city.
Questions, comments? No? Yes?
Sergeant Degner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. The situation on Rossin Avenue has not improved, and the appearance will not improve until we can get that bridge overhead painted. And I know I mentioned it years ago to you, Mayor.
Yep, you know, it is railway property, so you can petition.
But it's an eyesore. It's been, it wasn't an eyesore 10 years ago.
I know, it's art to some.
Mr. Mayor, we had, just to remind everybody in our strategic action plan, I believe it's a year or two out, but we do have public art and beautification initiatives around the city. And as I drive by Ryan Road four times a day and see that overpass, not as frequently as... I don't go by the one on Rossin as frequently, but I think that's ripe. That's ripe to find a really cool, unique, progressive solution to that. And, you know, we better start five years ago if we're gonna get something done with the railroad. But I think this is a great idea.
Well taken. Well taken. Mayor, on the bright side, the county did redo the pump house there, so it doesn't flood anymore, so, you know.
On the contrary, it flooded last week.
Flooded the other day, yeah. I mean, we had our 100-year storm again, so... But otherwise, it's pretty good.
Motion? I think we're ready for that.
All right, Kerkowski will make a motion to enter into a local county agreement with Milwaukee County for cost sharing of the county's intersection improvement projects at 6th and Rossin and 10th and Rossin.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
27 is consideration of resolution number 11861101717, accepting the workmanship and authorizing final payment to DF Tomassini Contractors, Inc. For the project involved the installation of street improvements in South 20th Street. Project number 15023. Mike?
So this is, I got the graphic on the screen again, and this would be what you see on the far south end, the intersection with Drexel Avenue, the red and the yellow sections. So the very first phase. And this contract was constructed by Tomassini in 2016, 2015, and into 2016 as the completion. So that was the Phase 1. And so we've done all the ASBIL thing. We finalized quantities the contractor has signed off on the final quantities, and therefore we were requesting that the project be closed out and the final payment of 80,000 and change be paid to the contractor. Just as a note, the originally awarded contract amount and the final payment are within 0.11% of each other. So Bridget likes to hear that. I usually don't get to give good news like that. Usually I'm explaining where things got a little on hand, but in this, this does include a change order, because if council recalls, we had the Phase 1, and then we had Phase 1A. And that's when the IKEA Development came in and was able to be considered. So we had to shuffle and do some redesign and add some quantity. And so that's where it really is surprising that we are so close to the original bid. We were over on many items, we were under on other items, and it all came out in the wash, and we were just about even. So it was coincidental to that from that standpoint, but good news for us.
Very good, Mike. And I'm glad you brought that point up, because I was gonna make that point, that we did overbuild that intersection to accommodate some expected growth there. Anybody else have comments, questions for Mike?
Motion.
Oracle move that the council approve resolution number 11861-101717, accepting the workmanship and authorizing final payment to DF Tomassini Contractors, Inc. For the project number 15023. This project involved the installation of street improvements in the South 27th Street.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Item 28 is consideration of resolution number 11862101717, accepting the workmanship and authorizing final payment to McGill Construction Company, Inc. This project involved the installation of the communication tower support structure improvements at fire station number one, project number 4015400670. Mike?
McGill Construction was the low bidder on the project. They completed the work, for most part, in the fall and into the early winter of last year. Came back then this spring to really just clean up the site, do a little grading and topsoil and seeding, and everything has grown in. And so they were requesting that the project be closed out, and we feel comfortable making the recommendation that the project be accepted and closed.
Questions, comments? Motion?
Kerkowski make a motion to approve resolution number 11862-101717, accepting the workmanship and authorizing final payment to McGill Construction Company, Inc. For project number 4015400670. This project involved the installation of communication tower support structure improvements at fire station number one.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Item 29 is our last engineering item. It's consideration of resolution number 11868101717, a resolution approving the license and maintenance agreement with the Oak Creek Franklin School District.
The school district is, well, there was negotiations early on when the school district had concerns regarding safety, the Forest Ridge site development, the new roadway in its frontage, which is IKEA Way now, and of course, the development, IKEA being one and more to come regarding safety of students and the traffic on the road. And there was a negotiated deal that the city would provide funding up to $25,000 for a fence to be constructed along their frontage. And they had requested that the fence be located closer to the physical roadway, actually within the public right-of-way of IKEA Way. And we resisted and persisted, and through discussions, we came upon a, through our legal and their legal, an instrument that we feel comfortable entering into with them. This is that license agreement, license and maintenance agreement, to have that fence installed within the road right-of-way. It's really gonna be four feet west of the west edge of the pathway. It's going to parallel the pathway. It allows them to avoid putting the fence within wetlands, which, you know, fairly daunting to even get approvals to do that. So we felt satisfied that we could allow this. Andrew, if you want to?
Sure, yeah. And, you know, I kind of rested on my desk, so I'll take that resistance, persistence. I like that. We'll have to use that again. Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's also some inconsistent right-of-ways in terms of how far they would be off of the, you know, the back of the trail, if you will. And for me, what kind of carried the day was, in some instances, our right-of-way, which we wanted them to be outside of, was significantly off of the roadway. So we would have had a fence kind of in the middle of nowhere. And I thought aesthetically, for consistency, as well as, you know, obviously, we had to avoid the wet, we had to work to avoid the wetland issue, otherwise they'd never get this permitted. I thought aesthetically, really, that carried the day for me. And, you know, putting, it would have seemed like a fence out in the middle of a field versus some symmetry, if you will, you know, along the back of the, or off the back of the trail, the sidewalk, so.
Yes, everything we've seen from what they've shown us, which is really schematics, has that fence paralleling the pathway. So, yeah, it will, aesthetically, it's gonna look decent, as good as a black vinyl cyclone fence can look. But, and the agreement does provide that we approve of the design, so we'll see something in more detail and make sure that we're happy with it.
Excellent. Greg?
First off, I wanted to just thank everybody involved. My kids go to Forest Ridge. Everybody that knows me at Forest Ridge always asks me what's with the fence that we were promised by our school, so I'm glad to see that this is going in. One question, I guess, is, as far as maintenance, they're responsible for the maintenance. I know the question's gonna come up. Is there any, I guess, guidance on them hanging banners, putting anything on the fence, putting cups in the chain link like you see at some fences? Or is it all there?
Yeah, we don't have that in the agreement as far as banners or anything like that. We really didn't talk about that as far as my recollection goes. I think that we would have a bit of an issue with that.
You'd have to check with Pete, the zoning guy, on that.
I can just add, Alderman Lorik, I think Mike's exactly right. I think there might be issues, but aside from that, and our ordinance providing for fence requirements, but also as to the maintenance, one of the conditions is that the fence needs to be free of vegetation and other obstructions. So I think by the language of the agreement, it would remain free, but as Mike pointed out, the nature of a black vinyl fence, perhaps, that's a different issue for another day, but that's what the agreement says at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Great. Anything else? Motion?
Oracle move that the council adopt resolution number 11868-101717, a resolution approving a license and maintenance agreement with the Oak Creek Franklin Joint School District.
Gale seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
It brings us to our vendor summary report, item 30. Could everybody please take a look? Any questions? Bridget is here to answer, or Mike possibly, a lot of engineering stuff on there.
Mayor, I would just like to make a comment and thank Mike for his persistence and what was the other? Resistance and persistence, and making sure that traffic light at 10th and Drexel got finished. Thank you. No problem. As we talked about at the last meeting, it was a bit painful, slow-moving at times, but they got it in, so.
Any other questions? Motion?
Thanks, Dan. Just to point out that significant piece of the pie here is for Xenithec for our bridge maintenance project, so I see they're working on the Nicholson Road, which I didn't even realize was ours, but it is. And we're paying for it. As you said, it was a long time coming on bridge maintenance, so we're seeing the cost of those come through here finally. With that said, Gale's gonna move to approve the vendor summary report in an amount of $999,483.18.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Brings us to the license committee, the next three items. I'll turn that over to Alderman Kerkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. The license committee did not meet prior to the council meeting. Tentative recommendations are as follows. Item 31, Kerkowski make a motion to grant an operator's license to the nine individuals listed on the agenda. Favorable background reports were received.
Oracle second.
Oh, sorry, look, Greg.
Uh, roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Item 32, Kukowski will make a motion to grant a temporary Class B beer license to Robert Casello, agent, St. Stevens Catholic Church, 1441 West Oakwood Road, for a harvest feast to be held on November 5th, 2017.
Oracle second. Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Item 33, Kukowski will make a motion to grant a temporary Class B beer license to Robert Casello, agent, St. Stevens Catholic Church, 1441 West Oakwood Road, for a fish fry to be held on November 24th, 2017.
Oracle second. Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Brings us to item 34. It is consideration of a motion to convene and to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, section 19.85, uh, parent 1, parent E, to consider canceling the exchange agreement between the City of Oak Creek and Fifth Property LLC. Item B, section 19.85, parent 1, parent G, to consider the notice of claim filed by Sergio and Ariel Poventud. I killed that one. Regarding a vehicle accident on October 1st, 2017, at the intersection of Howell and Rossin Avenue. Council President Gale?
Thank you, Mayor. Gale will move to convene and to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, section 19.85 sub 1 sub E, to consider canceling the exchange agreement between the City of Oak Creek and Fifth Property LLC. And B, section 19.85 sub 1 sub G, to consider the notice of claim filed by Sergio and Ariel Poventud regarding a vehicle accident October 1st, 2017, at the intersection of Howell and Rossin Avenue.
Guzekowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Now convene and to close session.
Guzekowski seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Uh, we will now consider, take um, consideration of resolution 11870101717, a resolution canceling the exchange agreement between Oak Creek and Fifth Property LLC. Do you want to go with the other one first? Any discussion?
All right, Gale will move, will move to approve resolution 11870-101717, resolution canceling the exchange agreement in City of Oak Creek and Fifth Property LLC.
Guzekowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
And we will also go back to number 36, consideration of a motion to take action. Uh, we'll leave it to Attorney Carl's.
Thank you, Mayor. This would be as to item 34B, a motion to grant the claim submitted by Sergio and Ariel Poventud in the amount of $8,945 regarding a vehicle accident on October 1st, 2017, at the intersection of Howell and Rossin Avenue, upon receipt of a signed settlement agreement and release of all claims.
Gale will move as stated by the city attorney.
Guzekowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Brings us to resume, adjournment.
Kukowski will make a motion to adjourn.
Oracle second. Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Hey, for the record, we would be done at 10:18.
Wow. When did he say it? 10:17?
Budget workshop, 5:00.
Yep, uh, just, just for public information, we do have a budget workshop, 5 o'clock tomorrow here in the council chambers. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody for tuning in. I'd also like to thank our staff. We had a very robust agenda, uh, very well prepared, uh, got many things done and out of the way and very heavy issues. Thanks to our IT guy, did a nice job back there. Uh, again, please get out there, discover and celebrate Oak Creek. And a good way to do that is this weekend at Town Square at the First Ever Fall Festival. Thank you.